And I'd like to remind everyone that you're supposed to sign in at the desk back here. So if you haven't signed in, please go do it. And as a note on the microphones, don't push any buttons. All right, let's settle down. Pop your robe. As soon as you sit down and be quiet, as soon as we get this going, as soon as we go home. And if you missed what I said, if you haven't signed in, please do so. We had people last, on Monday, who didn't bother to sign in. And on the microphones, don't push any buttons, please. The microphone is being run in the back. Get the microphone, wait a second, and then introduce yourself. If nothing comes out, wait another couple of seconds and introduce yourself. But please, don't push the buttons. So if you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance is to be quiet in the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation, America, individual, liberty, justice, law. Okay, all the... Complete the math. Also, we did, on Monday, our school supplies, and we spoke, are raising our hands. And if I did the math right, uh, the joint was settled in, uh, in the creation in 1799. They had a town meeting that year, and every year since. This would be the 250th annual town meeting for Town Hall. Okay, I believe we got to Article 7-22 on Monday. So, let's start with Article 7-23. Marshall Science Middle School Security Cameras, $45,111 spent on the school committee. Ways and Means supported this 15-0-0. That one, which is supported in 5-0-0, and the school committee voted in favor of it. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So unfortunately, as we know, school security nationwide is becoming more of an issue. So it's important to make sure that we have good coverage with security cameras. Right now, there are some gaps in middle school. So this system, the whole system, would have few advantages. It would close up those gaps, it would optimize system that's merging current two systems into a single system, and in addition, providing better cameras. So I'd say it's all, uh, ways and means support this, you can have this.
Capital budget, please, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, capital budget, we supported this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Yes, Ms. Wall?
Precinct 4, just wanted to understand, when the school department wasn't assessing it done in all the other school buildings? If they could be any other cap that you have in your consideration at this time? They could.
Mr. Coonan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. An individual assessment was not done at every single school recently, but we have a working assessments on all of them. The particular request tonight for these cameras is really to break Marshall Science up to spec since it was built as MSBA program for years ago. So, uh, but because of that, God's why the request is there is that we're just to break Marshall Science up to spec now, and will continue it rest of schools.
Anything further, is that Mr. Kelly? Your microphone will be here, please, thank you.
Jack, Precinct 7, how long is the information kept stored?
Mr. Coonan, please.
Approximately 30 days.
Anything additional? Seems enough for the questions. Let's get the rest of the people online, please go ahead and vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Any online results?
Two yeses.
Two yeses. The 7-23 passes. 7-24 Pine Glen instructional space, $115,562 to be spent under the school committee. School committee voted 5-0 in favor. Mr. Eiler, your vote and your comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, as stated, this is to create additional Pine Glen instructional space. Right now, there's a number of educational staff that don't have designated spaces. So this would partition off some space. In addition, this is, this will be upgrading a variety of spaces with ceiling work, doors, new flooring, reducing noise, doing some general repairs. So to cover all those made sense to us. Pine Glen's going to be with us for a while. So Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please, capital budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, capital budget, we supported this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. If I could get some clarification on, um, on exactly what the plans are going to be with Pine Glen? And speaking with a couple of parents within my neighborhood, there's a concern that there's been talk amongst the building committee that there should be a combined elementary school. And my concern is, is that with the amount of money that we're looking at tonight, and I'm sure throughout the next year or two, are we just spending money on a building that we're not going to have in another three years?
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Cormier, there's a very longer answer to that. I think we have a, I want to make sure we have a building committee meeting, um, May 16th, and then a public forum on May 18th, so we can get into some of the detail there. So we are in a, sort of, early stages of an elementary building project that involves Fox Hill, where the state is also requiring us to look at Pine Glen as part of that project. So that is happening. The project, though, even if it were to move forward, wouldn't be completed until, again, this is a state project, so there's a state dictated pace until 2028. We need this space at Pine Glen, and Pine Glen still needs to function as a school between now and then. So the programming that we're delivering at Pine Glen requires some additional classrooms.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. I'm glad to see some money being put into Pine Glen to bring it up to current specs and expectations of parents and students. Would like to see it stay at its current location in the long term. My question on this particular article is, when I add up all of the estimates that are attached, I get about $64,000, and yet the total here says 115. So I'm wondering what isn't being included in the package that we received? Thank you.
Mr. Coonan, please.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. So in those estimates, there's also alternatives as well. So the alternatives, combined with the original estimates, add up to that total. And then there's a 10% above and beyond, just in case of incidentals.
Mr. Lassano, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Lassano, Precinct 4. Yeah, to kind of piggyback on Mr. Cormier's question, it does seem like the Fox Hill and Pine Glen, you know, combined school seems to be a real possibility at this point. Not saying any more than, you know, the two separate schools. You know, Mr. Eiler said it's going to be around for a while. If it's not, though, can an article like this wait until at least next year? When at that point, next year, we would know if a big school, a combined Fox Hill and Pine Glen, would be built? Is this instructional space necessary at this point? You know, I know that Fox Hill is in, I'm not saying the same situation as Pine Glen, but a similar situation where we need, you know, could definitely use improvements. So if we're going to put the money towards Pine Glen at this point, would it make more sense to wait until this time next year? Because we could find out, as soon as June, I believe, whether this is going to be a combined Fox Hill and Pine Glen school. You know, the next question is, if that is the case, has the school committee, planning people looked into, if it is a combined school at the Fox Hill site, what is going to happen with Pine Glen? Will it stay a part of Burlington Public Schools? Will it, you know, would the town want to turn it into, you know, Town Hall facility? So has there been any discussion, if this does happen, combined school, what is the plan for Pine Glen at that point? Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Again, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Lassano, I would encourage you to participate in the public forum. All those conversations are happening, they're at an early stage. I think what the process is now is the owners' project manager and the designer that have been hired through the state's process are really trying to learn about our elementary program. And what they're trying to do is design a space or make sure there's adequate space for that. Again, the state is requiring, because of our enrollments, to look at both a three-school, which is a combined Fox Hill-Pine Glen school, and a four-school option. And so we can discuss that. All those things are being discussed, and again, the discussions are being dictated because we have the Massachusetts School Building Authority as a partner in the replacement of Fox Hill. No decision has been made, I'll state that again, no decision has been made. People tend to lean one way or the other and believe the conversations go in one way or another, and I appreciate that. Right now, they're just learning about how much space we need. In regards to this article, we have a developmental skills program at Pine Glen. That's a program that we have for children with autism. That population in Burlington is expanding. There are very strict numbers of students that we can have in those classrooms, both by number of students and by the age differential that those students can be. We've crossed a threshold. We actually need, we started with one classroom, I think, five or six years ago, and we need our fifth classroom next year. So again, Mr. Lassano, this is a need that we have that's immediate. We have the students enrolled. We need another instructional space. And Pine Glen, like Fox Hill, has run out of instructional spaces, so we're having to create new ones. So again, asking you that this space is needed immediately. And Pine Glen, regardless of the future decision and outcome this community is going to make, needs to function for five years with the students who are currently in Pine Glen.
Is that Mr. Kelly?
Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. If this is approved tonight, when will the work start?
Mr. Coonan, please.
Thank you. It'll start this summer.
So what if we postponed it till May, and you'll have more definitive information at that time?
This is May.
We could put it on the May warrant. I'm sorry, September warrant. On the next warrant?
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to have it obviously prior to, so we can start the school year with the new classroom space, ready to go.
Okay.
Ms. Hantoon?
Michelle Hantoon, Precinct 1, thank you. So I know that there have been a lot of questions kind of in the same vein, but I think what I would like to know is whether approving this and putting this new instructional space in pushes us in the direction of making Pine Glen more usable and from a feasibility standpoint and based on the studies that the state might be doing and how they're looking at it. Does this put us on track to potentially make Pine Glen look more usable for the future and push us more towards being able to keep it open?
Dr. Conti.
I'm not sure how to answer that. I don't believe so. The spaces that currently exist, both at Fox Hill and Pine Glen, are so insufficient given today's expectations for classrooms. The state, for an elementary school, has elementary classrooms roughly at 950 square feet. So the classrooms in all of those buildings would be too small. So the projects, I know people are keyed on the new building conversations. This is a very separate conversation. If we weren't building any school, we would still be asking to add this classroom to Pine Glen. We need this classroom for the students who are arriving and enrolled this fall. And that's why we're asking for this. And it's just an expense that I know we're putting into an older building, but that building still needs to function for the students we have enrolled in that building for the foreseeable future. Even if we knew exactly what we were doing, a combined school or a four-school option, we're four or five years away from that occurring. We may need to spend money on both of these buildings to bridge that gap because the buildings, again, have to be safe and usable until the, whatever new facilities are available.
Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. So anytime I look at an article like this, I gotta sort of figure out what sort of usage we're going to get. So if it costs X, I want to know what sort of, how many years we're going to get out of X. And in the backup, it says that the estimated useful lifespan is 15 to 20 years. But we don't know how we're going to be using this building in five years. And we don't understand, you know, as we, we're not going to get, we need a better plan. So we've already acknowledged that that building needs far more structural support to stay open. I guess what I'm getting at is, through the moderator, I'd like to ask Ways and Means, have there been any serious discussions about funding Fox Hill, a high school, and Pine Glen from a bonding standpoint? Has there been any serious discussion?
Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The answer is yes. If I looked at the letter in the budget book that I produced, one of the things that I pointed out there is that we have a lot of potential indebtedness coming up with a new elementary school, a new police station that we have a study funded on. And later on tonight, you'll see that there's an article for a study on the high school. So both Ways and Means and the administration has spent a lot of time thinking about, what does that mean to our debt service, and making sure that that's properly accounted for. And I think the administration has done a great job of really keeping a lot of things off the debt schedule in anticipation of that upcoming debt. So yes, that's absolutely something that folks are very aware of.
So I saw the other night that we have about a tax levy, we've got about another 13 million that we could tax our community if we chose to, and not have to pass a proposition two and a half. And I did the math, and if we were to borrow 50 million at 4 and 3/4% over a 15-year time span, the debt schedule on that would be 12,000, uh, 12 million dollars a year. So we'd be at that threshold, and that's just 50 million. We already know that Fox Hill's going to cost at least 250 million. I'm sorry, the high school will cost 250 million. It's going to cost in that realm, if you look at the scope of work, that we know needs to be done. The boilers that are failing, the HVAC that is failing. This problem has been a long time coming. You know, Fox Hill's going to cost another 100 million, and we're talking about whether we're going to take money from the state or not to fund a project we don't even, already have money for. They're just, it's been a budgetary house of cards. I would have to motion to postpone this to September. Because by September, we'll have a better idea what's going on with Pine Glen. Motion to postpone. Can I get a second?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to postpone this article. You're absolutely correct. Mr. Sinessi, that's enough. The comment of Mr. Murphy made was correct, so I can rule it all of order. We're going to continue our discussion on this article. Ms. Glantz.
Hi, Laurie Glantz, Precinct 1. As a parent of an autistic child who is greatly benefited from early intervention, I was wondering if someone on the school committee could speak to how important this space is to those kids who wouldn't get the space or the services, maybe because we didn't allocate this money? I'm going to put the children first, because I know my son wouldn't be where he is without the Burlington School System and early intervention. So if someone on the school committee or someone could speak to how important this is for the kids to get it starting day one in September?
Dr. Conti, or, um... Okay, Mrs. Monaco, please, for the school committee.
Laurie, thank you for asking that. As a grandmother of two children with autism, I think you and I both know how important it is to have the right programs in our schools and to take care of these kids and make sure that they get the best possible education that we can provide for them. The space at Pine Glen is absolutely necessary right now. Not in five years, but right now. And as far as the buildings go and what may happen, we have several options we have to look at. One of them has been brought up tonight, which is a big school at Fox Hill, which is a three elementary program. But one that's equally on the table is a four elementary program, which is what we now have and what the school committee voted unanimously to keep a couple of years ago. So I would agree with whoever it was that said these two things are not connected. Pine Glen has quite a few years in its future. And we need this space for those children that we need to take good care of. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Campbell.
Hello, Chris Campbell, Precinct 1, also Ways and Means member, and a future parent of two children that will be in the Fox Hill. These issues are too separate. And the importance here is we can't be playing chess with the current students' needs and the current population's needs. I understand we're all anxious to know what could, what if, how, spend, all important questions, but those are separate from what is facing us right now. The question facing us is, there is a need from the schools. The school's put forward a warrant article, gone through the proper channels. Do we, as a body, believe that that need is true? And if so, vote directly just on that. Not if the future of the Fox Hill, not the Pine Glen. There is thousands more conversations to come to that. We need to focus just on this issue. A nice support.
Ms. Byer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. Many people in this body know that we have a daughter with autism who came through the Burlington School System. And she had been at Pine Glen. If we end up, we, as a town, have a responsibility to meet the needs of the students in the school system who are there today and tomorrow, over the next five years. And if this is going to give us five classrooms, I want to say $115,000 is short money compared to, some of the parents may decide to take their child and go for legal representation and ask for an out-of-district placement. We want to be able to serve our children in our own school system. And so $115,000 for five years. I think you could probably take care of one student's out-of-district placement for that amount. So just one having to go someplace else because we didn't vote this in tonight, I think, would be poor decision-making on our part. Thank you very much.
Further questions? This gentleman here.
Hi, Dan Collins, Precinct 6. I think the alternatives that are on the form here are repurposing existing areas, sharing spaces, adding temporary partitions. I assumed on the form the intention was to repurpose existing areas in Pine Glen. But is it not possible, or has been considered, using maybe some extra space in one of the other schools for the purpose of this program? So that the, at least we have a temporary bridge gap?
Dr. Conti, please.
It's always possible to look at space in other schools. We just don't have it. So again, there's no space at Fox Hill to house this program. And Memorial and Francis Wyman have other district programs that are specialized. So Pine Glen is the current space for this specialized program. And there's a tipping point. So at some point, we are going to want these students included in all of our schools. But again, for right now, this program is at Pine Glen. Having the students there allow us to provide other services across the students, across all of the students, instead of replicating those services in other buildings. And again, you all stated a much better reason for doing this in terms of the student needs. The out-of-district risk is there. This is a highly regulated group of students in regards to where they can be educated and how they can be educated. And we just need this classroom. I just want to clarify one thing. We already have three classrooms, is that correct? Four? This is just to create one classroom. So it's creating a fifth classroom, which we need because of the enrollments that we have, is that correct? So again, we're not building five classrooms, we're just creating one classroom because we need a fifth classroom. What would happen if we don't do this is, these students would still require a space. We would displace another class, another teaching area. And you say, why not do that? Because we really can't displace a space that doesn't look like a regular classroom because these students can't be in a class that doesn't look like a regular classroom for all of our typical learners. So we can't put the students, that's what we need the money to create. It is needed in three months. And again, I understand all the questions. But again, this is about an existing program that's expanding, and the students will be in Pine Glen in the fall.
Mr. Marchesi.
Steve Marchesi, Precinct 3. Eric, there may be some old people in this room that may kind of remember that when I was on Ways and Means and I was working with a landscape outfit that called me up and said that the, I believe it was Raytheon at the time, wanted to get rid of those buildings that you have attached to the Fox Hill School. And we were able to, Mr. Jean, Jean, you know, was part of that, were you part of that, Gary? was part of that. Were you part of that, Gary? He doesn't remember. But the thing is, we bought those buildings into the town for $80,000. Curiosity is, is there anything that's in that same realm that might be available today or some type of portable classrooms that we can put in for a temporary situation instead of...I understand the need and I'm kind of a...because my grandson will be going up there next year for that class. So it's kind of personal, but I'm wondering if there's something out there that might be available to, on a temporary basis until we make a decision on a permanent situation. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Marchesi, I think Bob can probably give a better, a more accurate price on modular classrooms. And modular classrooms can be an effective tool. The lead time on modular classrooms is much longer than three months and modular classrooms are much more expensive than everyone, than anyone thinks. And then what has typically happened the last four or five years, because we've looked at that for expanded space, whenever there is a national, typically a national weather event, fires in California, I think Houston had a large flood or something like that, what ends up happening is all the schools get damaged and there are really no modular...all the modular classrooms end up going to sort of those areas and the prices just go high. So even for a two-classroom modular, I think we looked at was a couple million dollars. So it's, this is the most cost-effective within the walls of the building right now. Bob, we're actually converting a storage area into a classroom. So again, not ideal, but we're trying to use every square foot of the building we have for educational purposes and educational, educational space. If we were looking at a 10- or 15-year solution, I think modulators might be the way to go. If we had enrollments that we were projecting to be increasing, modular classrooms are a great bridge. My understanding, Mr. Marchesi, is the modulators at Fox Hill were only supposed to be used for three years. And I think now we're on our 18th year or something like that. I know they predate me. So we've used them for quite a long time. And again, we need this classroom. Not ideal, but we need this classroom to deliver the program for these students starting next fall.
Mr. Murphy. No, no. You're the only left hand up. There's no more questions. I'm ignoring you. Are there any other questions? Well, then move the question. I'm sorry. Mr. Murphy has moved the question. My hands are tied. I was trying to be cute. If there weren't any other questions, then we wouldn't have to vote on moving the question. But there are, so we'll have to vote on it. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? The motion carries, so the question has been moved. It brings us to voting on the motion. All those in, people online, please vote. All those in person, please, in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you.
Two yeses.
And two yeses online. The motion, the... What am I trying to say? The article has now been moved. Now we have to vote on the article, correct?
No, you already did the job. You did it.
I'll catch on to this job. Hold on, just a couple more years. Okay, so we voted on the article. It's done. It passed. Thank you very much. Let's move on to 7-25. BHS Light Speed Amplification Systems, $154,980 to be spent under the school Mr. Eiler, please. Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So these light speed amplification systems are basically a wireless mic that the teacher typically wears on a lanyard around their neck. And they say it's wireless and there's speakers. So the idea is for students that need an accommodation that requires a voice amplification system, this meets that need. But even in addition, in speaking with several teachers, the teachers actually really appreciate these because it means that, like right now, I'm not yelling so the people in the back can hear me. The teachers get that same benefit. They can speak in a normal voice. They aren't hoarse at the end of the day. So it's a great thing for the teachers also. So there's currently some of these in the system. There's not enough. So when one is needed, there's some shuffling about potentially. So this would purchase an additional 100 systems. The idea is that a typical BHS classroom would then have one and they'd be available all the time for you. So Ways and Means supported us unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please. Capital Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We support this 5-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Questions on this article? Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct One. Just one quick question. I see we're buying 100. How many classrooms are there? Are there 100 classrooms in the high school? I'm not familiar with the size number.
Mr. Kuna, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this building's 370,000 square feet. Typical classrooms is 145 and non-typical classrooms, meaning not meeting the 900-square-foot measurement, there's another 100 or so. So there's close to 300 spaces here in the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sikler, Precinct Four. Can you tell me what alternatives you looked at and the costs?
Mr. Kuna.
Thank you. So two particular instances. One is a mobile unit that can be brought into the classroom as needed. Those range around $1,000 apiece. They don't have the same coverage nor the same amplification power as the units that we're looking at. Another unit that we're considering, which is in their backup, is a mounted unit. So it has a separate control box with wired amplified speakers. That can either be two or four speakers. So those you're seeing in about the $1,500 range. We also have individualized headsets that can work off of Bluetooth that can connect to either a phone or an iPad, but individualized for the student. So those can range anywhere from $300 to $3,000 depending on the model.
And do we anticipate deploying them as soon as we get the 100 or is it sort of as needed?
We anticipate deploying those as soon as we can schedule them.
All right, thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Lozano.
Yes, real quick. I know we're buying 100.
Please, name and precinct, please.
Bill Lozano, Precinct Four.
Thank you.
Light speed systems are great. Using them at Fox Hill all the time. Are these available district-wide or are these just for the high school? So if there's a need at Fox Hill, Pine Glen, Francis Wyman Middle School, are these available throughout or are these just as needed for the high school?
Mr. Kuna, please.
Thank you. This particular request that we're looking for is just specific to the high school. We have already done rollouts in all four elementary schools and the middle school. We have built into our operating budget support and replacement for those units with our IT department. So again, this is the backfield of the high school that does not have these units.
Anything further? Seeing nothing. Let's move on with this. Online, folks, please vote. All those in Thank you. All those opposed? And two yeses online. The motion passes. 7-26. BECC Student Bathroom Renovations, $82,770 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the BECC is Burlington Early Childhood Center. It's the integrated preschool for ages three to five that is housed at the high school. The current bathrooms are aging and worn and were, and also they were designed for older, meaning taller, people than all the preschool kids. So the intent is to basically redo these two bathrooms so that they're age-appropriate and updated so they aren't, you know, worn out. So it's a very active program that the town has, obviously going to continue. So Ways and Means supported us unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please. Capital Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, excuse me, Capital Budget. We support this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this? Ms. Saltman. Use the microphone, please. Yes, I know, Myrna. You're loud, but not loud enough. Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltman, Precinct Two. How many wonderful town meeting members are there here tonight?
He didn't...she said 86, not 26, Myrna. Any questions on this article? Seeing none. Let's vote on it. Online, people, please vote. All those in favor? Okay. Online? Two yeses online. The motion passes. Let's move on to 7-27. Francis Wyman Stairwell Resurfacing, $42,049 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a maintenance item. There's four stairwells, four stairwells that are getting slippery and becoming dangerous as a result just from normal wear and tear over time. So this is to replace those and make them, bring them up to date. So Ways and Means supported us unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We support this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Seeing none. Let's vote on it. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And yeses. This 7-27 passes. 7-28. Pine Glen Siding and Sofits, $150,423 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Almost afraid to say the word Pine Glen. So this is a maintenance item in that the soffits are, and the siding are starting to deteriorate. I think we've seen with Wildwood School what happens if you just not do maintenance on a school. So as I stated before and as Dr. Conti has pointed out, even if we were to decide to stop Pine Glen in the future, it's five or six years out before that would happen. So we can't just stop doing maintenance now. So in support of doing this maintenance, also there is some asbestos abatement that would be necessary for this, which is increasing the cost a bit. So Ways and Means supported doing this maintenance item unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We support this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Seeing none. Let's move on. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Two yeses. 7-28 passes unanimously. 7-29. Francis Wyman Cafeteria Grease Trap, $39,393 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the cafeteria has a grease trap as required. There is a regular schedule to be cleaning out the grease traps, so they are maintained well. Unfortunately, a larger trap is required and in order to pass board health inspection, it's basically required that we do this work. And unfortunately, they aren't the most accessible things. It requires jackhammering your way down to it and then doing some work to replace it. So as unpleasant as it is, Ways and Means supported us unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We support this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Seeing none. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? And two yeses. 7-29 passes unanimously. 7-30. Memorial Fire System Upgrades, $41,190 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Mr. Eiler, please.
So this is a repeater system for fire and police first responder radio communication. So it's basically allows those radios to work throughout the school by amplifying and repeating the signal. The current system has been end-of-life by the manufacturer, which means they are no longer supporting it. So unfortunately, in order to keep this system going, it needs to be replaced. So Ways and Means supported us unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We support this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this? Seeing none. Let's vote. Online, people, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And two yeses online. Thank you. 7-30 passes unanimously. 7-31. Francis Wyman Grass Field, $700,000 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is a big one, obviously, at 700,000. This project is to renovate the varsity baseball field at Francis Wyman. There's also soccer fields there. So it's redoing the whole thing with, you know, doing the whole infield over, rotating it slightly to make room for things, grading, grass, irrigation, putting in fencing, dugouts, backstop, and a 10% contingency thrown in there. So this is a complete overhaul of that area, which should really bring it up to whatever standard people would like to have for this. You may have noticed that there's another article later on that's been withdrawn. This is basically a superset of what that envisioned. So this is in keeping with the athletic field, or athletic facilities assessment and master plan that the schools did. So this is a good example of having a master plan where people thought about what are the priorities, what should be done, figuring out what should be done first and actually following that plan. So Ways and Means supported us unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We didn't vote on this article. We didn't have backup at the time of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the school department on this? Or do you want to wait for questions? Questions on this article?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Liz Tucci, Precinct Six, I think. Thank you. Thank you. Two questions. The first is the timing. I'm on that field every Saturday in spring and summer for soccer, and it says throughout the year and in the summer. What's the throughout-the-year part?
Mr. Kuna, please.
Thank you. In a perfect situation, we would contract them tomorrow, right? But given the fact that we need to obviously get your approval first, we're hoping that we can at least get parts of it, use the existing fence that's there, get the grading done in the outfield and infield, get the new clay infield done, and then things that need to be sourced, like the backstop and any other things like that, maybe would continue afterwards. Ideally, if we could get everything lined up, we'd like that before the start of the varsity season. But again, contractor timing right now is just... It's going to be difficult.
The... So, baseball has a season, right? That's easier to work around. But what about the soccer fields that are included?
Again, so the soccer fields would be in the outfield. So, there's two sections, inside the fence, outfield, and then outside the fence, outfield. So, if we can time that perfectly, we'd do that. So, it would not impact, or at least wouldn't impact, the full field at once.
Thank you. Am I allowed to ask my second question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Second question is just, I understand last May, we approved the field study, and I believe the school committee communicated that. But is there a plan that's public, so that we can see what's next? What other fields will be repaired?
Mr. Kuna.
There is a finalized study. There's a summary page that... I'm sorry, a summary packet that's thirty-one pages long, and then the full study is five-hundred-and-ninety-six pages. I don't believe that was shared with all of you, but it's something that I will do. We'll make sure that it's on the website and so forth. I know that it has been distributed amongst the town and certain members, so I want to make sure that we do distribute that. It has been discussed at a school committee meeting as well, too, but we will make sure that it is publicly distributed.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Dr. Conti.
Mr. Tucci, just to add to that, is now that we have the study, and it was done... It's completed relatively close to town meeting. We'll get it out. I think our intention was to then put a group of people together, including, obviously, Bob from Operations, the Athletic Department, Park and Rec, some of the youth groups in town, to review the study and start to prioritize. And so, we can then put together a prioritized list. There's lots of needs. Those needs can be expensive, so we do want to make sure we're looking at this in sort of a ten-year way. And I want to be able to answer the questions. And honestly, what the plan is really helping the school department to do is to say... Is to say no, because there are a lot of people asking for upgrades to playing facilities. And if we have a plan, then we can say, you know, that's happening in three years, or four years, or when it is. The baseball field was clearly something that we were getting a lot of pushback on for many years, and I'm really confident now in asking for this, because the field study also said the baseball field needed to be a top priority. And because we jumped into the school articles right away from Monday night, from Mr. Sagorino's presentation, when he talked about the budget process, and there's guidelines on operating, there's also guidelines for capital warrants. And so, the town gave the school department a two-and-a-half-million-dollar guideline for our capital warrant articles this year. So, we have a capital plan. So, the grease trap and all the other stuff that you saw come out of that capital plan. This field is also part of that. And again, it's fitting within the two-and-a-half-million-dollar guideline that we're doing. It doesn't mean you have to approve it, but all I'm saying is, we're working within the guidelines that were provided for us, both on the operating side and on the capital warrant side. So, this does fit in, and it does fit into the master plan that was just completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cormier. Don't push the buttons.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. Maybe for clarification for some of the newer town meeting members, or some that aren't aware of the issue at hand, schools do not... Maybe I'm wrong over the years, but it used to be that the fields were not under the jurisdiction of the schools as far as maintenance and repairs. Is that correct?
Mr. Kuna.
I think there's two parts to that question. They're under the purview of the school committee being on the property, but we work directly with the rec department, and the rec department team maintains the outside properties.
Right. The concern that I've had over numerous years is that, and through... You could count the amount of parents that complain about the condition of the fields in Burlington. We don't have a very good track record, and that's not to beat up on Park and Recreation or any one group. We just don't do a good job at it. And year after year, the complaints just constantly mount. We're just not doing it. I don't mind spending money on renovating fields and doing the maintenance issues and everything else. We just don't keep up with it after that, and they just fall back into disrepair. And I don't like spending good money after bad. It's just not the way we should be operating, in the way of this kind of snapshot approach of, oh, this school is... This particular field is in really rough shape. We need to spend seven hundred thousand dollars, and it'll be all fine. No, it's not going to be fine, because in another ten years, the thing is just going to be in disrepair, and we're going to spend a lot more money again, when you really shouldn't, if you're doing proper maintenance on a yearly basis with it, but which we don't do. So, my concern is that we're going to move forward with this, and much like a lot of other projects that we've engaged in, in order to provide for the kids, and then it falls in disrepair again. I mean, as an anecdote to that, we did have, and I would love to see a program enacted, because we have numerous businesses here in town. And one of them did, at one point, decide that they were so frustrated with their children's fields, that went along and went over to help maintain the field. And the town issued a cease and desist on the guy. I wish I could get the guy's authorization to name his name, but I'm not going to do that in public. It's just not right. If they're not being maintained, we should be looking at some sort of a program such as that, where you have numerous landscaping companies within this community that would be all too happy to lend, assist, donate, or otherwise, some of their services to keep this thing in the conditions that they should. And we don't address it. We just ask for the seven hundred thousand dollars, and then we're all going to sit here, and we're going to vote on it, because it's a wonderful thing to keep the fields all pretty and nice for the kids. And then in three, five years, the things are going to be a mess again, because we're not doing the proper maintenance on it. That's not the best way to be spending the taxpayers' dollars. It's irresponsible to be spending that kind of money, when we're not following up and doing the things we need to. We need a program to address some of this stuff. And it's just... It's reaching a boiling point, where I'm just sick and tired of spending this kind of money, when we're not doing what we should, in order to maintain the taxpayers' dollars and as a good investment to this community. We should be doing better.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Any further questions on this article? Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just wanted to apologize. Quick correction. The Ways and Means vote was actually 10-1.
Ms. Sikler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sikler, Precinct 4. Have you looked at alternatives for funding, either corporate sponsorships, grants, that sort of thing?
Mr. Kuna.
No, we have not.
Is there a reason why?
I don't have the time or the know-how to make that happen.
Okay. The second question is, and it wasn't really clear from the backup, the water... I think there are gardens back there, right? Are they still going to have water? Access to water?
I'm sorry. Can you just repeat just the last part of that sentence?
Yeah. Are they still going to have access to water?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There's currently water there now, and there's currently irrigation there now.
Yes.
Repairing the irrigation on the field won't impact the community gardens' water.
Just want to make sure. Thank you, Mr. Kuna.
Anything further? Ms. Saltman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltman, Precinct 2. Is there anyone here from the Recreation Department that can comment on what was said about the maintenance of the fields?
Myrna, we're getting a little out of scope from this article, please. The article is whether we want to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on the field, not whether we wish to revamp a maintenance program at this time.
That was... I just wanted to see if anyone was here, but thank you for answering.
Thank you, Myrna. Anything further? Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Maury, Precinct 1. A point of information to Ways and Means Chair, Mr. Eiler's comment was, is Article 31 withdrawn? My question was, how does this combine or affect 31? I don't think it's... I haven't seen it was withdrawn, so can somebody tell me the difference of...
It has not been withdrawn.
It has not been. So, somebody can... Can somebody clarify?
We will get to that when we get to Article 31.
This is... No. This is... This Article... Article 30... This is 731. So, these are two separate articles for a total of eight-hundred-and-forty thousand for the work at Francis Wyman Field. Is that correct? That's my question.
Pass that again.
There's an Article 731 for seven hundred thousand, and then Article 31 for a hundred-and-forty thousand. That's eight forty for the fields at Francis Wyman. Is that accurate?
Yes. Mr. Eiler.
So, our understanding, in looking at Article 31, is that it appears to be a subset of the things that are described in Article 731. So, we did not, in Ways and Means, discuss Article 31, because it was our understanding that the proponent planned to withdraw it. Had we discussed it, I think we would have... And I'm going out on a limb a little bit here. We would not have recommended for Article 31, because it would have... Some of the things, and they are the same things as what's in 731, and it doesn't make sense to do both of them. But we did not specifically discuss that. So, I don't think it would make sense to add them. Mr. Sinessi, I believe, is one of the proponents, and may have something to add to that, but...
Mr. Sinessi, please.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I am one of the proponents of Article 31. Not 731, but Article 31. And we wanted to start the discussion of a new varsity field down at Francis Wyman, because of all the things that we've already established, people have heard, and what we know from just being down there. So, we wanted to... Our solution at 31 is really just a Band-Aid. I'm supporting this. If somehow this gets fumbled at the goal line, we still have 31 later in the evening. But I encourage everyone to vote for 731, this one that we're hearing right now, because this is really a better project. It's deeper in scope. It really addresses the underlying issues of the drainage down in that field. If I were to make one endorsement... Well, I've got the microphone in my hands. The organics just isn't working when it comes to fertilizer, to speak to what Mr. Cormier was saying, that we don't maintain the fields well. Organics, it sounds really nice. Mercury's an organic item. I wouldn't want to ingest that. So, I mean, it sounds really flowery and nice, but it doesn't cut it when it comes to maintaining the fields. But I fully support this, and hope they will reconsider their organics policy.
Thank you. Anything further? Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. To the prior speaker, would you withdraw at this time Article 31? Thank you.
I think that's out of order, Sally. I'm sorry. He mentioned that if this one passes, that he will consider it, and we will allow Mr. Sinessi to make that decision come when we get to Article 31. Ms. Colley, I believe, you had a... That was your question. Okay. Another question over the side. Carrie Riley. Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Carrie Riley, Precinct 7. I'm brand-new. I just want to say that my son is on the baseball team. It's a really bad, dilapidated field here. Every baseball... Every field in America... Every town in America has a baseball field, a varsity baseball field, let alone the Middlesex League. We go to Woburn, and they have dugouts, they have scoreboards, they have backstops, they have turf. You know, in Wilmington, all these towns are doing so much more with so much less. Let's make this a nice field, a place where people have pride in, and want to take their kids and their families. Please, think about voting for this. Thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. To the point of Myrna Saltman and John Cormier, does the seven hundred thousand dollars include any sort of maintenance plan going forward?
Mr. Kuna.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It does not include a maintenance plan. It's just a startup, and then we will work with the rec department to continue maintenance on this field.
Now, anything further? Seeing no more hands. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Two yeses. There being a clear majority in favor, 7-31 passes. 7-32 and 7-33 have been withdrawn. Which brings us to 7-34. Pine Haven Columbarium. One hundred fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the columbarium, it was made... Phase 1 was made in 2017. There's a hundred ninety-two niches in there. About half of those are reserved, which, if you do the math, is about sixteen per year being used. So, we've got a few more years left on that before it fills up, but we're planning ahead. So, the intent here is to use existing foundations that are in place and add a section that will be very consistent with how the current one looks. If you look in the backup, you can see pictures of how that looks. This would add one hundred twenty-eight new units. The cost was based on what Phase 1 cost to build, so have a pretty good idea. This is... So, a lot of the... The previous articles that we've talked about have all been coming from free cash. This is coming from a receipts reserved account. So, when graves sites are sold, they go into the receipts reserved account, and can be used for things that are appropriate, such as building columbarium niches. There's six hundred thousand dollars currently in that receipts reserved account. So, there's plenty to cover this article and the next one that we'll be talking about shortly. Ways and Means support this one unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods. Capital Budget. We supported this article 5-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Questions on this article? Seeing none. Let's move forward. All those... People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Two yeses, online. 7-34 passes. 7-35. Pine Haven Chapel Roof. Fifty-five thousand dollars to be spent by the Select Board. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the... Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the roof is, the shingles are from 1996, so what, there's about 27 years on them. They're starting to leak. So as a preventative maintenance measure, as you do at your house, the roofing has to be replaced periodically to avoid damage, and that's what's being done here. This, as I mentioned, would also be funded from that Receipts Reserved account from sale of graves. So it doesn't add to the operating budgets coming out of that money from sale of graves. Ways and Means support this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We support this Article 500.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Seeing none, let's move forward, please. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Two yeses online, the motion passes unanimously. Article 8, Acceptance of Chapter 90 Money. Mr. Eiler, please. Do we wish to accept money?
We love accepting money. So every year, the state allocates dollars for transportation, infrastructure, roads. And FY '23 is 1.09 million. This year, it's slightly less, at 1.07 million, but we still like the idea of taking money to support work on our roads. So Ways and Means support this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions on this? Yes, Ms. Angelo.
Pat Angelo, Precinct 5. This money is coming from the state. Do we have any money left from the COVID funds from either the government or the state?
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We do have ARPA funds remaining from the state. I think we went through an accounting of that the other evening, but we have, we anticipate having approximately between $5 and $6 million left over for that. And our intention with that is to pay down debt related to one of our water projects, whether it's the MWRA project or the PFAS project.
So that's from the state. Do we have any federal funds left?
That's the, the ARPA funds come from the federal government. That's what I was just referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing, people online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? No one wants to be opposed. It's taking money. And two yeses. Okay, we take, we, we vote unanimously to take money. Article 9. Make sure I have the right paperwork in front of me. Article 9, MWRA Inflow Infiltration Debt Service. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Sewer Inflow Infiltration Fund the sum of $107,975 for the purpose of paying the FY 2024 debt service. The rest is as printed in the warrant. Questions on, Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, sorry, wrong one there. So we have loans that we get from the MWRA, MWRA to address inflow and infiltration issues in the sewer system. We get one of these loans about every two to three years. So we'll have, we have four outstanding, they're 10-year, 0% loans, and they come in the form of 75% grant and 25% loan. So it's very favorable. And in fact, you'll see in a later article, the loan that we'll be taking out this year. So this is, that would be Article 14. So this is, we're paying the loans off by using money that goes into the INI fund, and that comes from sewer connections. So again, this doesn't affect the operating budgets coming out of that INI fund. So Ways and Means voted to support this unanimously to pay the debt that is due on our loans.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, I believe this is, you had no, probably didn't look at Article 10, 11, and 12. Is that correct? I don't want to ask you for something you don't have. Right? Okay. Okay, questions on this? Seeing none, we'll vote on this one. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Two yeses online. Article 9 passes. Article 10, Sewer Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote to authorize the sum of $6,444,500 to operate the FY 2024 sewer services. The rest of the article is as printed in the warrant. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Sewer Enterprise Fund works like a revolving account essentially, and it, money goes in there from the sewer fees, and it comes out of it to pay for our sewer operating expenses. Typically, the expectation is that we'll break even on that. Due to pandemic, surprising effect of that is there's slightly less sewage fees. So as a result, the account is operating at, expect to operate at a very slight deficit this year. It's 6.44 million coming out. We expect to get about 6.2 million in revenue. The revenues are rebounding. It's expected that they'll come in balance again. In the meantime, there is a $2 million balance in this fund. It's acting as a buffer, so there's no issue there. Ways and Means voted unanimously to keep things moving.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions from the body? Okay, I see none. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? And two yeses online. Article 10 passes. Article 11, Transfer from Water Stabilization Fund. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means that the town transfer $1,285,351 from the Water Stabilization Fund to cover the operating expenses, MWRA entrance fee, debt service, and miscellaneous expenses related to the connection to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority system. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the Water Stabilization Account, as mentioned, is designed to store money for use with MWRA-related expenses. So just from an accounting point of view, there's sort of a long chain of events here. Water revenue comes in, it goes into the General Fund, it shows up in free cash. We transfer that into the Water Stabilization Account, which is what we did in January, and then now we take it out of that account to pay for the MWRA-related expenses. So everything's going exactly as it should be. Ways and Means voted unanimously to pay the MWRA expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions on this? Seeing none, let's vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? And it's clearly more than a two-thirds. So Article 12, excuse me, Article 11 passes. Article 12. For Fire Aerial Tower Truck. Has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $2 million for the purpose of purchasing a fire aerial tower truck, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Back in 2008, we bought our current 100-foot tower truck. So it's 15 years old now. So it is starting to rust. Some of the structural components, in particular, one that supports the ladder itself, are starting to rust. So obviously, we don't want to see that go. We did have our subcommittee go and actually eyeball things. The Fire Department does a great job of maintaining the equipment, and aesthetically, they look fabulous. But unfortunately, that doesn't stop the rust. So there is a long lead time on these. It takes three to four years to get these. So by the time the new truck arrives, our current one will be about 18 years old, which is definitely past the expected life of these things. So it's good that we're thinking about this now. The backup, you may notice, is fairly light on this. It's a budgetary quote that's provided by our supplier, based upon basically getting the same thing again as what we have now. So the unfortunate reality of the situation is there's a limited number of sources for this, so we don't have a lot of bargaining power. But, so that's where that budgetary quote's coming from. Ways and Means supported this unanimously to keep our firemen safe and our fires being put out.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please. Yes, we're back to our capital item.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We support the 700. We think it's important for the town to support a piece of equipment that's probably going to be used by our commercial neighbors who pay two-thirds of the taxes to the town. So we support this 700.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Ms. Angelo.
Pat Angelo, Precinct 5. Has anybody looked into these specifications for this engine to make sure it'll fit into the existing building? And this is not a joke, because if I remember, when we bought the other one, I don't think it fit when it was delivered, and we had to do some structural changes to the building. So has anybody looked into it to make sure that this engine will fit into the existing buildings?
Mr. Sagarino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mrs. Angelo, thank you for reminding us about that. But that's the first thing we look into prior to purchasing any fire truck. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson.
I'd like to ask a question about the need for this truck. I don't know the old inventory of trucks, but I understand that this one is for, is the largest one and is for fires in tall buildings. I'd like to know what is the number of buildings in Burlington that can only be serviced by a truck of this size? Because I believe that the next largest tower truck probably covers a whole lot of the buildings in town, and I'd just like to know exactly how much we really need this truck. Then, we know that the Fire Department has been reorganized because there are a lot fewer fires in town than there used to be. There are a lot more ambulance calls and things like that. And so I think that we should look at, what are the number of real fires that we have in terms of the equipment that we have? So I'd just like to know what the, what are we getting for this truck that we wouldn't get from the smaller trucks?
Chief, go ahead. Just wait.
I'll wait. Okay. Well, we've had four significant fires this month, within the last month. One at Lord Barron, which we used the ladder truck for. We had a brush fire that we used the equipment on the ladder truck. We had another brush fire and house fire combined that we used the ladder truck for. So these are not just for the tall buildings. This is, this has a large water stream that comes off the tip of that truck. So when we need to surround and drown, we use that. As for another tower truck, we only have one. So this will be replacing the tower truck that we have. If we don't have a tower truck, then we cannot reach the taller buildings. But also, we can't carry the extra tools that the fire engines, the smaller trucks, carry.
You carry, you carry equipment on this aerial truck that the other trucks don't, can't use, and but you might need them at a fire?
Yes. We have more power saws. We have extra sets of extracation equipment for motor vehicle accidents. So it also goes on motor vehicle accidents. A few years ago, we used it to rescue one of our guys off the roof of a burning building. A few years ago, we used it to rescue someone who, a window cleaner, where the apparatus, the window cleaning apparatus broke down. We used it to pick someone out who was crushed inadvertently in a trash truck. So...
And in all of those instances, if you didn't have this truck, you wouldn't have been able to handle that situation?
Absolutely.
No other trucks could have, could have handled that job?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sickler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sickler, Precinct 4. I'll ask my usual question about someone else paying for this. And I know the Fire Department's been very good about getting grants. And so have you looked into getting grants for the tower truck?
Chief, go ahead.
We're not eligible for a grant like that. When they put the grants out, there's certain specifications that they are looking for in certain years. And the apparatus purchase, or even a building purchase, any large purchases, we aren't eligible for. We're lucky that we got what we got in the years past, the SCBA and other things, but we are not eligible for it.
And I'm sorry, what makes us ineligible?
I would say the wealth of the town.
Okay, all right, that's fair. And then just quickly, so what happens with the old tower truck? Is there an aftermarket for such things, or how does that work?
So the last time, you know, we kept our last ambulance, we kept our last engine, you know, the oldest ones, and tried to sell them on our own, which we did. But it's a pretty, you know, wasteful amount of time. We got $4,000 for our last fire engine. It's of no use to anybody unless they have the ability to, the tower truck, tear it, tear it off, take the truck off of the frame rails that are rusting, and repair all the rust, replace all the frame rails, and then put it back together. So for... So for us, it's not worth it. And if we were to trade it in, they would have to put a lot of money into it. So for a dealer, it would be worth it. But we would not get a lot of money for it, because they have to put a lot of money into it.
Understood. Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Glantz, did I see your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Glantz, Precinct 1. I'm certainly in favor of this, but my question was about the timings and the money. So if this becomes available from delivery in three or four years, I assume we have to appropriate the money now in order to place the order, but does that money just sit invested and somehow waiting to be given over to the vendor? How does that work? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan, yes, in order to sign a contract to purchase the truck, we would need to have the appropriation from town meeting. And up until the time where we have to make those payments, those funds would be held here in town and invested with the treasurer.
Anything further? Seeing no further hands raised. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And two yeses online. Article 12 passes unanimously. Article 13. Water main upgrade replacement has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will transfer from free cash the sum of $1,500,000 for the purpose of funding water distribution system upgrades, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is an every-other-year article that we have, where in the alternate years, we allocate a similar amount of money for roads and sidewalks. So this is the water main year. This is going to be from free cash. Is that still correct, Ms. Sagorino? Thank you. So this will come from free cash, another case where the administration's done a good job of keeping things off the borrowing schedule. The water system was built in the 1950s. There's 130 miles of pipes, and 30 miles have been upgraded and replaced since then. DPW has a great list of projects that they're prioritizing to do. There's about $17.5 million on there. We're not going to do that all in one year, obviously, but the point is they're thinking about this carefully and prioritizing things. And then as we allocate the money every other year, they're applying it on that list as to what's the best priority to make sure the system is well-maintained and that things are replaced before they break. So Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, capital budget. We supported this Article 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct 7. In the backup, there's a couple of interesting streets that are near and dear to my heart, Belmont and Cormier, that have zero beside it. And I'd like a little explanation from the Highway Department as to why that has no money allocated to it and no schedule apparently to do it. A little background for those of you who don't know where Cormier and Belmont is. It's the cut-through that is used to go from Market Basket over to Woburn, to Russell Street. And it gets a lot of traffic. And several years ago, the streets were accepted as town roads. And one of the first things that we did, they did, the town did, was to scarf up the falling apart tar asphalt, grind it all up, pound it in, revibrate it in, regrade the street. And after waiting a week or two, put down some new asphalt, base layer, et cetera. When they, before they even put down that base layer, they dug up the road four times because of water leaks. And since they have finished putting in the five, the layers, the final finished layers of the asphalt, the road has been dug up. I stopped counting at 30, and that was since about 2007. And some of the dig-ups were because of leaks, the gas leaks, and that's caused the pipes, the water pipes, to deteriorate. And the Water Department is doing a great job coming out and fixing the leaks. They compact the soil around the leak area, but that causes the pipe that goes from the water main into the houses where they're being fixed, where the leaks are, to deteriorate and cause leaks also. The pipe between the main and the home is the responsibility of the homeowner. So my question is, when is Belmont and Cormier are going to show up on the list of priorities? The last time that the Highway Department came out to fix this, I was asking the folks that were there, and we jokingly said, "We need to buy one of the houses that are coming up for sale so that we can move part of the DPW water folks there," because they seem to be always on Cormier or Belmont. My question again, when is this going to be put on the list? Because I think it's at something more than 60 years old. It's time to replace it sooner than later. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The short answer is, Mr. Martin, that Belmont, Cormier is on for this season, this construction season.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Kevin Clusey, Precinct 2. I just wanted to get an update. Peach Orchard had a water main break, and we didn't have water for like an entire night and into the morning. I was wondering if that was kind of on the list of priorities to repair that as well, or just kind of like how you prioritize the list of what gets repaired when? Thanks.
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator. The, so anyways, I've been looking at the history and the backup that we've been submitting. The town of Roswellton's been very generous with funding this thing, because when I put the backup originally together, it was 20 years ago, when the system was 50 years old. Now it's approaching 70 years old. So the way we look at water main replacements, there is upgrades and there is like high-break histories. So certain areas of town, based on the diameter of the pipes and the demand for water, we may have to upgrade from like a six-inch pipe to a 12-inch pipe. Then there is high water breaks. So we map out all the water breaks. We've been doing it for, I don't know, probably 30 years. They're all mapped on GIS, which is Geographic Information System. Where we start seeing clusters, high-break histories for like, Mr. Martin's area, services. For whatever reason, the copper services are corroding. Some places, it's main breaks. We have a lot of asbestos cement pipe. If the pipe sits in the water table, it gets punky, it gets soft, it starts to break. We see a series of breaks over a period of time. We prioritize that name for replacement. Peach Orchard, I mean, it's unfortunate, we just paid it a short time ago. We've had a couple breaks out there. It's just kind of the nature of the business. Ground freezes thaw, as the pipes move around a little bit, and then something will eventually give, you know, some of the stuff, again, is 70 years old, so can't replace it all. It doesn't make any sort of financial sense to do that. But again, we're always monitoring the system, and we replace pipes as we see necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Yes, Jack. Mr. Kelly.
Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. Do the pipes that have asbestos in it play a part of the priority, other than the ones that get wet and punky?
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator. The asbestos cement pipe is, it doesn't, asbestos doesn't come out into the water.
It's not friable.
Right. Well, it's friable when you cut it, but when it's bound up in the cement, it doesn't get into the water system. So it's replacing, I mean, it'd be great to replace all the asbestos cement pipe, but there's really no reason to. It's, you know, in the ground itself, it's not...
Okay.
...passive to health.
Any further questions? Seeing none will vote on this? People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? And Article 13 passes unanimously. Article 14 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee that the town appropriate the sum of $1,200,000 for the purpose of funding sewer inflow/infiltration mitigation as required under an amended administrative consent order issued by the Department of Environmental Protection, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the selectman, is hereby authorized to borrow $1,200,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other author, pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that the amount authorized to be borrowed hereunder shall be reduced to the extent of any grants or gifts received by the town from Massachusetts Water Resources Authority or from any other source on account of this project to pay costs of removing sources of infiltration and inflow into the town sewer system, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Okay. Mr. Heiler.
That was a mouthful. So as mentioned in the article there, we are in a consent order with the Mass DEP to continue doing our inflow and infiltration work, basically to keep the volume in the sewage system to just being a sewage and not things that shouldn't be there. So we're obligated to continue this work. This would be, if I understand correctly, it's 900K of a grant and 300K of a loan. Is that correct? Okay. Right. So it is 75% of, is a grant, and so 300,000 is the loan, which would be 25%. It's a 0% 10-year loan. Back in Article 9, we paid the interest on some of the previous outstanding loans. This is continuing to work by taking one of these very favorable loans. The Ways and Means vote unanimously to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, capital budget. We supported this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this? Mr. Widdilla. Hold on, Woody.
Dave Widdilla, Precinct 2. Is all this work done inside of Burlington, or is it done in various places and we just pay for it?
Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. All this work will be being done within Burlington.
Anything further, Mr. Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. If I could, Mr. Moderator, Paul, the 75-25, we're authorizing the 12, 1.2 million, but it's costing the town 300,000. Could you just explain if we're getting the 75% of grant? Is it by statutory that we have to authorize the full amount and why?
Yes, John, that's correct. It's $300,000 of loan to be repaid over 10 years with 0% interest. The remainder of the 1.2 million is a grant, direct grant to the town that we don't have to pay back. And the language is legal. It comes from bond counsel related to the borrowing.
Thank you.
Anything further on this article? Seeing no more hands? Let's vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? And two yeses online. Article 14 passes unanimously, which is more than two-thirds. Article 15. Cable Access Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $585,000 to operate the FY24 Cable Access Enterprise, of which $585,000 will come from the FY2024 Cable Access Enterprise Fund estimated revenue account. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So PEG is the Public Educational Government Channel. Our supplier for that is BCAT. So the way this works is that as part of your cable bill's small amount is set aside for the PEG fund. Every quarter, I believe that's sent to the town, it's put into this enterprise fund. The money is then sent to BCAT as part of our contract with them. The amount specified here is an upper bound on the amount that will be spent from this fund. It's meant to be a good estimate of the actual revenues that will be coming in, but the actual amount that will be sent to BCAT would be limited to the actual receipts if they're less than this amount. So this is a fund that we've had since 2018. So because it's coming from your cable bill and going through this fund, it's not part of our operations budget, so it doesn't affect your taxes that way. Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Questions on this article? Seeing none, let's vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And two yeses online. Article 15 passes unanimously. Article 16 has been moved, will transfer from, what's our, for ambulance purchase, transfer from receipts reserved for ambulance services to purchase an ambulance. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee that the town transfer from receipts reserved account for ambulance services the sum of $485,000 for the purpose of a new ambulance, including all of the associated costs. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So back in May of 2019, the ambulance receipts reserved account was created by town meeting, and that was in anticipation of us moving from providing BLS or EMT ambulance services to ALS paramedic services. And that started in March of 2020. So in the past, we had outsourced the advanced life support system services, and now we're handling those calls in-house. The system has worked very well. We're generating about $460,000 a year in terms of revenues from this. And the cost, when considering, you know, paramedic stipends and extra supplies and so on, is about $360,000 a year. So we're basically netting about $100,000 a year by moving up to this higher level of service. So it's been a win in that we're getting faster response to ALS service, our employees are more highly trained, and it is actually funding itself. So this article is to purchase an ambulance. There's three ambulances that the Fire Department maintains. They have a frontline piece of equipment, a backup ambulance, and then a reserve or backup-backup ambulance. So by replacing one every five years, it keeps that pipeline fresh and the ambulance is in good condition. And as you'll note, this article was for a little less than 500,000, 485,000. With that 100,000 surplus each year from the ALS services, it basically covers the cost of an ambulance every five years. So this is not coming out of the operating budget, but is coming out of that receipts reserved account. The lead time on this is two years, so it's important that we get this in and keep our ambulances in good shape. So Ways and Means support this unanimously.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, capital budget. We supported this 7-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Question on this? Is that Mr. Boyven?
Just one question about the vehicle purchase, and I guess it pertains to the fire engine also. If we contract for a vehicle now and pay the price, but the delivery isn't for two years or eight years in the case of the fire department, is the price fixed at what we contracted now, or do we have to wait and see what it will be advanced to in two years?
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once we sign a contract, once we have the appropriation in place, and that's the valid price as of this moment in time, not the price from two years from now. It's probably two years, but once we have a signed contract, they're obligated to sell us that vehicle at that price.
Anything further on this? Seeing nothing. Let's vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And we have one yes online. Article 16 passes. Article 17. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will transfer from receipts reserved account for ambulance services the sum of $360,000 to cover the costs associated with operating the ambulance services at the advanced life support paramedic level for FY2024. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as just described, the cost of, the incremental cost of the ALS ambulance services is about 360,000 a year. So when the FY24 budget was developed, the assumption was made that this article would hopefully pass, and that extra 360,000 would be covered by the receipts reserved account. So basically, this is a good way of tying the extra revenue directly to the increased expenses associated with that service. So Ways and Means support this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions on this article? Seeing none, let's vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And two yeses online. Article 17 passes. Article 18 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will transfer from receipts reserved account for ambulance services the sum of $360,000 to cover the costs associated with operating the ambulance services at the advanced life support paramedic level for FY2023. Mr. Eiler, anything more to add?
I, yes. So this is the same thing, but for FY23, a very short story.
Questions? Seeing none, let's vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And two yeses online. Article 18 passes. Article 19. Fund Administrative and Professional Compensation Plan. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means that the town adopt the Administrative and Professional Compensation Plan for FY2024 and transfer from the FY2024 negotiated settlement account 208,516 dollars for the purpose of funding the plan, same to be expended under the appropriate authorities. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So the Administrative and Professional Plan covers our managerial level employees, department heads, non-union employees. There's 48 people included in this group. The amount described here, oh, so these are annual contracts that are done, not the usual three-year union contracts that you've seen. So the amount here is, basically allows for a 2.5% increase for this group, which is very consistent with what we've voted for with the union contracts. There are no other open contracts after this, and this is the final item that comes out of negotiated settlements account. It doesn't affect the operating budget because, all right, I rephrase that. It doesn't increase your taxes at all because it's coming out of this negotiated settlements account that was already factored into the budget. The administration has done an excellent job on predicting where all those contracts would end up, so the negotiated settlements account was sufficient to cover all the negotiated increases that occurred this year. So Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions on this? Seeing none, let's vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And two yeses online. Article 19 passes. Article 20, Sick Time Buyback. Has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee that the town transfer from free cash to the accrued liability fund $500,000 to cover the costs associated with payment of any accrued liabilities for earned leave that is due to employees upon retirement or separation. The same to be spent with the approval of the town administrator. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So when someone retires from the town, we're obligated to buy any leftover leave and sick time as per contracts. Typically, we only have a few people that leave in a given year, and the administration is able to find money from a variety of sources, either, you know, leftover money in negotiated settlements account, unspent funds from some other accounts. So we oftentimes will handle this by a transfer from those leftover monies, so to speak. Unfortunately, we have a particularly large contingent that have given notice of their impending retirements. There are 6 to 8 retirements from the fire department in particular, and so this is much larger. The liability associated with that is much larger than we would typically expect in a given year. So back in May of 2021, there was an account, an accrued liability account that was created to hold money for this purpose. The schools have put money into that account in anticipation of some of their retirements. This, so this is a request to transfer money into that account for the town side of these particularly large bump in upcoming liability that needs to be covered. So this is a contractual expense that we do need to pay, and putting it in this accrued liability account allows us to have it there, and it's ready for when these employees actually retire, which may be this year, maybe next year. By having it in the account, it can roll over, whereas if it was, you know, just in the operating budget, we wouldn't be able to roll it over. So this is planning for that liability. So Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions on this article? Yes, Betsy. Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a point of clarification. Is there a maximum number of, amount of time that these contracts allow people to use to, you know, cash in?
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Betsy, yes, there is a maximum amount of time. It's different in every contract. Over the town, the town, over the course of time, the town has attempted to lower that number, so it's even different for different employees depending upon what their start date was. They may have been grandfathered in, but there are different amounts within different contracts.
Mr. Lozano.
Bill Lozano, Precinct 4. Through the moderator. Mr. Eiler, you said that the schools, you know, put in money to this fund. Are there school-town employees that do have the ability to buy back their sick time?
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Yes, sir. It's in just about every contract, and I know for a private sector employee, it seems like an unusual benefit, but this is a very common benefit for public sector employees that were negotiated in good faith in many cases, many years ago. But in, I can't speak to all the school contracts, but I can say that it exists in all the town contracts in one form or another, a little bit different for each union. Is that what you asked? Administrators? Superintendent Conti's here.
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sick leave buyback only exists in, remains in one school side contract, and that's custodians, and it's a limited sick leave buyback. In the teacher's contract, there's an attendance incentive, I think that you're aware of. If teachers sign up, they can get up to five days of their sick time, but they have to sign up before the start of the year, and if they don't use their sick time, then they get up to five days paid back in that year. And then I think it counts down, Mr. Lozano, as you know, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. But those are the only remaining sick leave buybacks that currently exist in the school side.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Further questions? Ms. Warren?
Chris Warren, Precinct 4. I did hear, through the moderator, I did hear 6 to 8 firefighters are retiring, and then how many other people are retiring? And is there a maximum number of days or hours that a person can take?
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, you did hear correctly, between 6 to 8 firefighters. And just as an example, within the firefighter's contract, it's 1,800 hours if you started to work for the town prior to 2005, and after 2005, it's 1,200 hours.
And follow-up question, if I may, through the moderator. At what point does sick time not be used in terms of, and when does short-term and long-term liability insurance take over?
I'm sorry, can you ask that question again?
And I apologize. This is a benefit that just doesn't exist in a free market world. I just, I don't know what it is exactly. If somebody has a short-term disability, how much sick time do they use before the short-term disability insurance kicks in?
As far as I know, they can use as much sick time as they have prior to jumping on the disability.
Thank you.
Mr. Glanz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Glanz, Precinct 1. I know in recent years, we've taken up and started paying towards the quote-unquote unfunded liability of OPEB. This feels slightly similar to that issue as far as the context of it. So my question is, how much of the overall liability of outstanding time owed, is this 500,000 cover? Or I guess, what's the kind of magnitude of the overall problem, and should we be funding into it kind of like with OPEB over time, or can you give us a sense of the scope, Paul? Thank you.
Nolan, I believe within the town's audit, this number is calculated, and I think it's a calculation of if the town ended today, what would we owe our employees? And I think it's in the range of 3.5 to 3.7 million, but I could check that back at the office. What we've faced in the past couple of years, and I could tell you during the first 10 years I worked for the town, I don't think one person retired. And over the past few years, we've experienced just a ton of retirements. Same thing that's going on in the private sector. Pandemic made things worse, made people want to retire. So we typically are able to accommodate a normal year of retirements with three or four employees. You know, the way we do that is we start the new employee later so that we pick up some of that budget money that's been there. As Mr. Eiler mentioned, we, if we have money in negotiated settlements accounts, it's already been budgeted, we utilize it for that. But the upcoming year, we're really having an unprecedented amount, and the number could be a larger number that we could actually handle within the budget, which is why we put this before you.
Anything further on this article? Mr. Mori.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Mori, Precinct 1. To Paul, through you two, the town administrator. This is a relatively new initiative. I think Mr. Eiler said it was established in 2021, and I think you just addressed one of my questions, was that it's, we just have not had the precedence of, you know, volume of people retiring, and that's fine. Why isn't this handled at a department budget level? These are costs associated with basically salary. So I guess why is it town-wide in one pool versus department by department? Thank you.
Mr. Sagorino.
I guess the best way to answer that, Mr. Mori, is that, again, if we have the ability within a budget, say, one person retiring, and we can stagger the start date of the new person and cover it within that existing budget, then that's what we try to do. I guess, like I say, what next year and what we've been experiencing recently is just really large numbers of retirements with bigger numbers that we could accommodate within a typical budget year. Thank you.
Anything additional? Seeing none, let's move forward and vote. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Two yeses online. It's clear majority in favor. Article 20 passes. Article 21. It has been moved, Economic Development, Placemaking and Community Events. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $40,000 to pay for expenses associated with promoting and expanding the economic development efforts for placemaking and community events. Mr. Eiler, please. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So you heard in our first night from our Economic Development Director, Ms. Tantakalas. And this is to basically continue some of what's called placemaking in the town. So, you know, perhaps, you know, the marquee project for that was the Beer Garden, which was very successful in terms of turnout and engaging a lot of local businesses. So the intent here is to continue that kind of thing to really help engage people with the town center businesses, create some more community there. In the backup, she mentions a lot of potential activities like, you know, food truck night, movies and light shows and so on. The intent would be to also work with the rec department on some activities where that makes sense. So the goal here is to really just build upon those activities and continue them. Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions on this? Seeing none, let's vote on it. With all those in favor? Thank you. Online, people, please vote. All those opposed? And Article 21 passes. Article 22, Fourth of July Parade. It's been moved and seconded from the, by the Ways and Means Committee that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to pay for expenses associated with the annual Fourth of July Parade. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as you know, every year, we have the Fourth of July Parade, which is a great way to get the community out and have some fun together. Last year, the Select Board in recognition of pandemic really making it a tough ask to get sponsorships, had asked for $40,000 that town meeting allocated. About $8,000 of that has, was unspent and has carried over to this year. The Select Board felt that $20,000 plus being able to get sponsorships this year should cover an excellent parade. So Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions from the body on this? Seeing none, let's move forward. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. There's a clear majority in favor. Article 22 passes. Article 23, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Training. Has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to pay for the Select Board Initiative for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, including costs for training, consultants and materials. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as you probably know, the Select Board had a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. They submitted their final report in November 2022. This is really building on that, you know, they got the ball rolling with that. The goal is to continue that work. In particular, move, I'd say the first year was sort of a research phase, as it were, and had a few initiatives. The goal here is to use this money both for training of the various selected boards and also build on that in coming up with actionable proposals that can be done to further this effort. So Ways and Means felt that this was a good project to continue and supported unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions from the body? Ms. Angelo?
Pat Angelo, Precinct 5. Didn't we hire a diversity equity person at a substantial amount of money last year? And can't he provide training and direction rather than spend this money?
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The schools had hired somebody, the town has not.
It's coming out of the same money pot. Why can't we share this person?
Well, I believe Mr. Porch resigned.
Oh, so we don't have a person?
Now we don't have anybody.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, here. Beside Nikki.
I'm a member of the former DEI committee. I think this is a good start. I actually have a couple of questions. Will this apply to all town meeting members? And are there any plans for town employees? And also, have you already chosen the trainer consultant? And will this $20,000 cover, like, is it going to just be a one-day thing or will there be follow-up? And my final comment is, are there any plans to reinstate the committee or any other means of soliciting community input? Thank you.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy, hang tight because you're going to need to repeat a couple of those questions for me. So out of order, do we have anybody picked? No, not yet. Another question. Sorry, that was one question out of four that I remembered. It's been a long day. Help me out. What was one of the other ones?
Tree. Town meeting members.
Oh, so yeah, town, town meeting members. So we can't force an elected official or to do this. We encourage it because we want to get as diverse and as large a population as possible to participate, but we're not going to, you know, it can't be required. And then there was another question around...
Yeah.
Oh, town employees, yeah. So step one is to unite elected officials as much as possible under a clear and aligned vision for what the plan is before we ask the staff to begin to participate. But the hope would be that, yes, much like a lot of private sector folks go through DEI training, it would not be a bad idea to have some level of DEI training as a part of the training that's asked of the staff. And then, oh, to bring back the committee, I believe was your last question. Yeah, I mean, you know, this is, this is definitely a step in the direction of continuing the conversation like we've talked about, right? And so, you know, after we, you know, go through this exercise and use the data we've collected to go through this educational, you know, time period, however long that winds up being, the goal would be to then reassess what and how the committee would be formed and made up and try and stand it back up if that is the direction that we're looking to go in.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
So I think this is the first step of many that our town needs towards this, but my specific question is, can attendance be taken if we can't force our elected officials to go? And can that be published, so we know?
Mr. Priest?
I would imagine so, sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phyllis Neufeld, Precinct 5. With the dissolution of the DEI committee and with Ray Porch leaving town, what exactly is the selectmen's initiative for DEI that is listed in the warrant article? And I do have a follow-up question.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phyllis, to clarify, you're asking what our strategic initiative is going to be? We don't currently know. You know, we, and I mean, I'm being completely honest and transparent here, we don't. You know, we opened the conversation with the committee, you know, a year and change ago. It was a big learning curve for a lot of folks, including myself, you know, and we think that it'd be beneficial to continue the conversation because this isn't like an issue or a building that we can just solve instantaneously. And so, you know, I think that hopefully coming out of this educational endeavor where we can, again, align expectations for ourselves, we can then form a more clear path forward.
Thank you. Since there's no committee that is formulating or driving DEI policy or decisions at this point, how will it be decided what training is to take place and who will make that decision?
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That falls to the Select Board because they were a subcommittee of us.
Yes, sir, right here. Dan, I forget your last name.
Sorry, that's all right. Dan Collins, Precinct 6. So if there hasn't been anybody selected and there's no real structure, how did you come to the $20,000 request?
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just through some general research and some early phone calls with a couple of different consultants, we haven't picked anybody, but we got a general ballpark and then rounded it up because we figured that there would be need to print stuff and prepare things. And so we just picked a nice round number, to be perfectly honest.
Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Mr. Priest, if you don't have a plan, how, is this on, is this scheduled to be on the selectmen's agenda at any of their meetings in the near future? And how will member, members of the public be able to keep up with what, what the Select Board is doing in terms of finding a training consultant and coming up with a policy for training? And another question to the notion that you can't require elected officials to attend, would elected officials who receive a stipend, are they exempt from attendance? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So regardless of whether or not this is approved tonight, yes, the Select Board will continue the conversation and determine next steps from that point forward. We figured that this would be the next best step, which is why we are here discussing this now. So, you know, if folks want to participate or follow along with the conversation, then, you know, keep an eye on the Select Board agenda as well as, you know, watch the meetings or come to the meetings, attend, ask questions and, you know, participate is the best way to do it. With regards to the stipend, I don't know and I can't answer that. I would defer to anybody who's smarter than me in this room with that information.
You can't make, you can't make elected officials.
We can't make them. Town councils, town councils, we can't make them.
Ms. Byer?
Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. I had previously gone online and looked at what other municipalities were doing as far as DEI training and looking at DEI planning for the community and implementing things. There is an outstanding study that was done for the city of Cambridge just a few years ago. It is online. They came up with solid recommendations of how to, the need really, to come up with a solid plan, to recruit people, to recruit a diverse employment base within a community and the need to be able to make quicker decisions. And I would suggest that the $20,000 here could be spent looking at creating a plan, figuring out what the town wants to do going out and implementing DEI training in the future and looking at grants that may be eligible, that we could be eligible in getting to be able to make the next step forward for diversity, equity and inclusion here in Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Anything further? Yes, Mr. Lozano?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Lozano, Precinct 4. I think it'd make a huge statement if the members of the Select Board would, I can't say guarantee, but put themselves out there and say, I will be educated in this matter, I will be involved in this. I know, you know, five members aren't here tonight, but I think it would say a lot if all the members of the Select Board did get training in this, did fully participate. I think that would only send the right message. I don't know if I can ask you, both of you through the moderator, if you would both be willing to do that. I know you can't speak for the other guys, but I think it's really important that the five Select Board members be involved throughout the process.
I think it'd be appropriate for the selectmen to discuss that at one of their meetings, Mr. Lozano. Yes, question from online.
From Melissa Mark, Precinct 7. I would like to move this to September to let Select Board do more research.
So I assume that's a motion to postpone till September. Was there a second?
Second.
Discussion on whether we should postpone it or not? Seeing no comments, all those in favor of postponing? All those opposed? Motion fails. Let's continue our discussion. Are there further comments about this? Yes, sir, here.
Thank you. Darrell Interess, Precinct 6. I support the spirit of this. I think as others pointed out, there's sort of a lack of a plan. And as someone who would like to participate and attend, what would I be attending? What was this $20,000 paying for that I would attend?
Do you have any answer to that yet, Mr. Priest? Or is that something you're going to work on?
It's certainly something we're working on. We need to pick a consultant and decide what the plan's going to be with them as opposed to try and force something that we don't, you know, know how to fully guide ourselves.
Ms. Cadillac?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As somebody who's followed this for a couple of years now, I'm a little bit frustrated because I'm super bought into the idea of bringing DEI into the town, but I'm looking at the backup for all of the other warrant articles that we have tonight, and there's bids, at least one bid for each of them. And I'm just frustrated that that level of research hasn't happened yet. I also feel like we have a bit of a chicken and egg situation. As I've listened to all of the conversations around DEI at the Select Board, there's been a lot of, we don't know what to do yet, we need somebody to tell us what to do. And then, I don't know, I just feel like there hasn't been a whole lot. It's like the circular kind of dog chasing its tail argument that's been going on. And I just, I wish there was more backup because I think we need DEI training for everybody who's an elected or appointed official and all of the town employees. And I think that if I had something in front of me that said what I was going to get with the $20,000, this is a teeny, tiny, tiny speck of our annual, which is like a tenth of a percent or less, a hundredth of a percent of our annual budget, right? We shouldn't need to argue about it, but we want to see that there is some kind of plan in place so that when we start actually getting on the train that we should have been on for a very long time now, that we're actually going to go somewhere and not just sit still and go in a circle for the next year or two years or three years. Thank you.
Are there any comments that we made that aren't beating up on the selectmen?
It's all right, Mr. Moderator.
Mr., yes, Monty. Mr. Pearson?
Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. I would like to select, suggest to the body that the best way to ensure that things move ahead and, or get a report back and something like that is to vote them this money. They'll then have $20,000 to do some stuff. They'll then have $20,000 to do some stuff, and they'll have an obligation to report back to us. If we vote this down because it's too vague, then everything just sort of drifts again. So I would really urge us to go ahead and provide them with the money and give them the startup boost they need to get started with this because if we vote it down and tell them they're too vague, then they're kind of left in a void. So I would, I think what we should do is go ahead and encourage them and give them the money to get started.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anything further? Ms. Bonacera.
Nancy Bonacera, Precinct 4. I just want to echo what Monty said. I think if we don't vote in favor of this tonight, it might not come back, and I don't want that to happen. So yes, it's vague. They need input. If, you know, in the spirit of the way the government's supposed to work, we can show up to the meetings, talk, talk to Nick and everyone else, email, call them. Let's do that and help them figure out what the next steps are and who we should be going with for training this town. Thank you.
Anything additional? Is that Ms. Warren back there? Something new, I hope?
Slightly. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I also support this, even if it's for workshops. Those generally go for about $2,000 to $2,500 for two or three hours per workshop. So $20,000 just on workshops could be spent very easily, and I support this.
Thank you. Anything further? Yes, sir.
Hey, Kevin Kluzy, Precinct 2. I was just wondering, has any research been done into whether this can be kind of integrated with the software, with annual training, like Skillsoft or something along those lines? I know a lot of public and private companies are doing that, and I think it would cost significantly less than $20,000. I think that $20,000 is just kind of significant, given that this could be done and the same information can be conveyed over a video on YouTube or something along those lines.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, only because elected officials don't typically go through that level of training. That's reserved for staff. But I mean, we can certainly keep an eye out as we move down this road if that would be a more efficient way to kind of get folks what they need.
Mr. DiTucci.
Dan DiTucci, Precinct 6. Just a point of information, back when I was on the board in 2009, members of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm not sure if there were other select board members, I mean, school committee members, elected officials, had to do a code of ethics training through the state. So if you could do that and see if the state has something, a template for something already in place, then we can just jump on that, the same way they provide the code of ethics training. I think that would be the easy way to go.
Seeing no further hands raised. People online, please vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
Yes.
And yes is online. Be a clear majority in favor. Article 23 passes. Article 24, seasonal decorations for the common, has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to pay for the purchase of seasonal decorations for the town common. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the purpose of this article is basically to buy supplies that will last for many years, so it's not meant to be an every-year kind of article. Basically to help create a festive atmosphere during various seasons. I think Ways and Means would have preferred to see more backup and a more detailed plan, but we like the initiative and vote to support unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Eiler. Questions from the body? Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. I just have some clarification questions. What does seasonal mean? What holidays are we talking about? Holidays for whom? And we have a very diverse community, so are we talking about all the holidays that everyone in our community celebrate? And if so, what's the policy about that?
Mr. Priest, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So first off, I'm just going to take a moment, apologize. I started a new job six weeks ago, and it just happened to coincide when backup was due, and so I dropped the ball on that. So I'm happy to take any and all questions on any of these. We called it seasonal because we're trying to be nondenominational. We're trying to be as inclusive as possible, and the idea was spurred from the notion of, you know, we light up the common at night, which is great, but especially during the summer months, the lights aren't really seen. We've talked a lot, or I should say, you know, there's been a lot of discussion over the years about banners up and down 3A, right? How great it would be to build more like Boricca or other towns that kind of have a little bit more visual celebration throughout the year. We thought that the common would be a great place to pilot test that notion of having maybe some banners, some bunting, take the opportunity to dress up the common and let the residents of Burlington know that we're celebrating whatever it may be, right? It could just be the fact that it's fall. It could be the fact that the high school art kids are doing something and we're displaying their art. It could be for any number of things that we've yet to determine. We haven't settled on the official list for anything yet, but knowing that the quantity of things, especially things that last from an outdoor perspective, wind up costing a few dollars, we thought that $20,000 was a good start.
Yes, online question.
Dave Miller, Precinct 4. Have we asked if local businesses would sponsor and cover this cost?
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a personal thing. We ask the local businesses a lot. We ask them to do a lot for us. They sponsor, quite frankly, a lot of things that we wind up doing throughout the town over the course of a year. And every once in a while, you know, we say, geez, how much is it going to cost and can we just bite the bullet on it? And we felt that $20,000 was not something that we couldn't afford for decorating the common, which is an area that a lot of the businesses just don't see.
Anything further? Yes, ma'am.
Keep talking, keep talking, Phyllis. Phyllis Newvelt, Precinct 5. Are any of these decorations religious in nature?
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I mean, no, I don't believe that they will be. You know, like I said, our goal is to be as nondenominational as possible.
Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Will you have a committee? Will there be a committee of citizens? In other words, not just the Board of Selectmen, but asking for input from the community about what types of celebrations might be, what types of things might be celebrated on the common, you know, whether seasonal or, say, for a specific purpose or month, you know, Women's History Month, there's Black History Month, there's Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally, whether or not we put together a committee, we're always open to folks coming to the meeting and providing input. Even if you can't make it to a meeting, please email us. You know, we definitely want all the input, for sure.
Yes, Cheyenne. We have a mic down here, please.
Hi, Cheyenne Bhattacharya, Ways and Means. I do appreciate the concern over keeping this nonreligious, nondenominational. For example, I personally don't celebrate Christmas, but I do enjoy seeing the town common lit up during the winter months. So I think this seasonal sort of decoration could be beneficial, even if you don't particularly celebrate those holidays or events. Thank you.
Seeing none. Let's vote on this. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. There'd be a clear majority in favor. Article 24 passes. Article 25 is withdrawn. Cross that one off. Article 26. Burlington 225th Celebration. To see if the town will, has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to pay for expenses associated with the Burlington 225th Celebration activities. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I learned a new word, quasqu bicentennial. So the purpose of this is to create and buy materials to work with organizations in town in working towards celebration of Burlington's 225th anniversary. As you know, we started this town in 1799. Once again, Ways and Means would have preferred a little more backup on this. It's a little vague exactly what's going to happen, but we did feel that it's a desirable activity. We do like the idea of anything promotes community and celebration in town, so Ways and Means did support this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions? Mr. Pearson.
I think that the...
Excuse me. Who am I?
Who am I, Hale?
Thank you.
I'm Monty Pearson, Precinct 3.
Thank you.
I think the reason you don't know the word for 225th is that it's not something that's celebrated very often. I think that a 225th anniversary is not, is really making up, pushing a celebration idea. The other thing is that I think that if we're going to do a celebration like this, there ought to be a committee that forms and comes up with things that it wants to do and things like that. I don't think that it makes sense for us to just vote for $20,000 and we'll see what happens and, you know, just spreading it around amongst departments in town to use when things come, even it's just a little vague. I'm disappointed in the Ways and Means Committee, for you guys not making them go back and come up with something better with this, but I think unless we have a committee of people in town who want to make this into a concerted effort, then I just don't see any point in doing something like this.
Mr. Pearson, are you volunteering for the committee?
I am not volunteering for the committee because I...
See, that's the problem. They have problems getting people to volunteer.
I know, but that's because 225 is not a significant anniversary.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I won't make any sty remarks about birthdays. So 225 is still something, and the Historical Commission, you know, came to us and asked what we were going to do to ensure that we were celebrating the 225th after 225 years ago, which was quite the fanfare. The biggest thing that changed over the last 25 years is that we just don't have as many volunteers readily available to fill those committees, Mr. Pearson. And so with no committee, it's really hard to get things done, and it can't keep falling to the same handful of folks that wind up sitting in this room most of the time. We get tired. We have full-time jobs. Things come up. We have families. And so to ask, you know, folks to stop everything and have a 30-plus person committee like we had 25 years ago seemed quite daunting to the select board. So we ideated for a moment, and we said, well, what's one way we can continue to celebrate without the people? And we said, well, the organizations and the departments have people. The biggest thing that we're missing is the key to consistency. So this $20,000 is going to go towards hiring a graphic designer who is going to help us create a brand for the 225th anniversary and put together a media package that's going to contain pre-built materials, so email headers and letterhead and T-shirts and banners and whatever else we think we might need. And then we are going to distribute that to any department and organization that's going to be holding an event over the next year. And that way, throughout all the current events that will exist in the year 2024, we will already have a preset, consistent package across every single one without having to have a 30-person committee solely dedicated to creating the fanfare.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Warren, Precinct 4. Through you to Selectman Priest. The Historical Commission has come before the select board on several occasions, or at least a few, and it seems that they're gearing up for this celebration. I was under the impression that they would plan this celebration, and I think I'm surprised that this is more about media materials and so forth. So I just wanted to get some clarity as to whether they have a budget to put on a celebration. Thank you.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Historical Commission didn't ask us for a budget. We've been talking with them over the past year about it. We issued a proclamation a couple of months ago in preparation for it so that they can kind of go out and do some door knocking and let folks know that the proclamation's been issued and that we're gearing up for it because February of next year, we'll be here before we all know it. And they asked for our help, is what this amounted to. And so we are trying to lead that charge and do this in conjunction with them, but like I was saying to Mr. Pearson, we just don't have the body count, you know, to maintain something in its own right.
Online question.
Dave Miller, Precinct 4. Have we asked if local businesses would sponsor and cover this cost?
Can you repeat previous answer?
I'll just simply say, no, we haven't.
Mr. Spielberg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Tiberger, Precinct 4. We have a town day every year in the summer. Wanted to roll into that.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we will, right? So that's one of the existing events that will be there. But the Fourth of July Parade, we'll also have the opportunity to be a part of that if Truck Day wants to hop on the bandwagon, pun intended, I guess. You know, any event that we currently already do, we'll be able to give this package to them, and that way they'll be able to have the branding already set.
Ms. Warfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Priest, I haven't talked to you personally about this, but the Historical Commission is already aware of this, that on February 28, 2024, I have already reserved the Grandview Farm to have a birthday party. You all will be invited. There will be cake and punch. So that is going to start part of the 2025 celebration. And just, I don't know, I don't know how many, I don't know how old everybody is. I don't know if I'm going to be here in 25 years for the 50th, the 250th, but I think if we celebrate along the way, that just shows our community spirit. So thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Hi, Cheyenne Bhattacharya, Ways and Means. In response to a previous comment as to 225 years not being often celebrated, not many towns make it that far, so here we are. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, are we ready to vote on this? Okay, people online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Two yeses online. It's a clear majority. Article 26 passes. Article 27. Been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will accept from the trustees under the will of Marshall Simons in an amount of $74,907.15 for the improvement of Simons Park, same to be expended under the direction of the Recreation Commissioners. Mr. Eiler, are we... Is Ways and Means in favor of accepting money?
Always. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This should be a little easier than the last one. So every year since 1906, we've been receiving money for... From the will of Marshall Simons. There's two votes required. This is the first of those two votes. The second of the votes will be in September where the Rec Department generally describes what project they plan to be doing with the money. So they don't have a project lined up right now. Last year, you may recall, the project was the accessible treehouse at Simons Park. So this is a great way to get money to help enhance the town. Ways and Means supports accepting this money.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions on this? Seen none? Let's vote on it. People online, please vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Two yeses. Article 27 passes. And Mr. Egan, my apologies. If I had known you were still here, I would have moved this article up. 28 has been withdrawn. Article 29. We will discuss Article 29 and Article 30 together. They are both tied into the Burlington High School feasibility study. Article 29. I'll read. It's been... Has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee that the town repurposed the funding originally appropriated in Article 7-18 at May 2022 Annual Town Meeting for BHS musical floor reconstruction. Or otherwise provide the sum of $450,000 for the purpose of funding consulting services which may include owners, project manager, design, architectural engineering, and any other services required for completing a feasibility study for the renovation of or a newly constructed Burlington High School, same to be spent under the direction of the school committee. And Article 30 is... It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will transfer from free cash to the sum of $1,050,000 for the purpose of funding consulting services which may include owners, project manager, design, architectural engineering, and any other services required for completing a feasibility study for the renovation of or a newly constructed Burlington High School. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as Moderator pointed out, you can think of 29 and 30 as sort of a two-part article. The first part is last May, we voted to have money for the music floor reconstruction to make it more accessible. I think one of the concerns that we had is while we agreed that it's important to have that kind of feature in high school, is that it's good to always have an overall plan and think about the big picture. I think the school department, thinking about it, decided that they would like to move ahead and come up with that big-picture plan and have a feasibility study. That would be looking at options anywhere from significant renovation to the high school to rebuild. Look at all... You know, everything's on the table to figure it out. The high school was built in 1973, so we're coming up on 50 years here now. So it's not surprising that at least some significant renovation would be required. So as Dr. Conti pointed out, each year, the free cash, the town administration determines what would be a reasonable amount to put towards various projects. And typically about half of that is allocated towards the schools. So schools have done a good job of staying within that $2.5 million allocation. And so the additional $1,050,000 for Article 30 is fitting within that allocation. So if we vote for repurposing Article 29 money and the additional money from Article 30, that would be a total of $1.5 million for doing this feasibility study. I think Ways and Means is always in favor of let's plan and then do so that we're working towards a plan instead of just, you know, shooting at the first thing that we see. So Ways and Means supported unanimously both Articles 29 and 30.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Does the school committee wish to make any comments at this time? Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And, Mr. ... Just briefly off-topic because I didn't get to say this before. I know there's a lot of interest in the Fox Hill project. We did put flyers up in the back. There is a community forum scheduled for May 18th between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. and the directions on that. It's completely virtual, so you can stay at home and learn about that project. This will not be the only opportunity, but it is the first forum that's been scheduled. So there's a flyer on the back, and we'll make sure we send an email reminder to everybody as well. To Mr. Eiler's point, the reason for this article really came out of the experience in presenting the music room floor article last year. We are able to maintain a 50-year-old high school very well because of your generosity. And some of the questions last year from this body, I didn't feel like I had sufficient answers for. $450,000 is a significant amount of money. The accessibility issue is real. The floor definitely needs to be filled in, but if you ask me if that's the first priority of this building, that is 370,000 square feet, I can't say that. We can easily spend millions of dollars fixing things in this building to bring them up to code little by little by little. So the point of a feasibility study is it's the first thing that the Massachusetts School Building Authority would ask us to do if we were to put this building in their process. We had to ask you to fund a feasibility study for Fox Hill once MSBA accepted that project. And that brings experts in to put together, to look at our program, to look at the overall facility, and then to lay out a plan as to whether there's a renovation is possible, whether there's a rebuild is possible, and to put some prices to it. So really what we're looking for is, say, a five-to-10-year plan as to what to do with this site and this facility. When this building was built, again, you may know, you may not know, you may have attended, there were 2,000 students here. The building was built for 2,000. We have under 1,000 students here now. What's going on with the additional space? You know, we have BCAT, we have a preschool, we have the central office, and we're actually renting sort of a wing space to our special education collaborative. So the space is being utilized. But my point is, an auditorium of this size wouldn't be associated with a new high school were we to rebuild. We may get an auditorium through the state program. So I guess my point is, in voting for this feasibility study, maybe someone with the expertise would tell us we can keep the auditorium, but tear down two of the wings and build a two-story classroom wing. We wouldn't have two gymnasiums, given a high school of this size, if we were to be in the state program. Maybe we can keep two of our gymnasiums. Again, because of your generosity, we've kept up the facility as best we can. So I just felt like I didn't want to keep coming back with warrant articles for half a million dollars for projects that I wasn't sure what order to put them in. And so I know this is a lot of money, but feasibility brings in designers and project managers to tell us what the project could look like. Could we phase it in? Do we tear down a wing at a time? Again, does it take five years to do that, 10 years to do that? And I think honestly, if we put together a decent plan, then the town's financial team can look at that plan and maybe phase in or phase over time the costs associated with it. So I just think it's before we spend more money, which is very easy to do on a 50-year-old 370,000-square-foot building, we'd like to bring in some experts. As Mr. Eiler said, we put off some other capital needs. You saw that we had dropped two articles that were associated with the field plan because we wanted to reserve as much of the funding as possible to cover the $1.5 million. And again, the music warrant article was needed. I'm not saying it's not, but I think it would make sense for us to just take a pause, which many of you actually said last May, and put this plan in place. And if the... If all the experts say, boy, the first thing you need to do is fix that music room floor, I'm going to come right back to you and ask for the money to fix the music room... The music room floor. So that's sort of the justification with the reallocation of the music room floor, the $450,000, and the balance of the 2.5 million that was allocated to schools for this year. We do come in under the $2.5 million guideline that the town allocated to schools. So I would ask for your support. And I think as someone astutely said last May as well, when we did the field study, please understand that the study doesn't end the future needs. It's going to help us define those. So there's going to be more requests that follow, but they'll be, I think, justified and in the proper order. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Questions from the body? Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct 7. I'll be real short. How did you come up with $1,500,000 for the cost of the feasibility study?
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fortunately, we had just gone out for a feasibility study for the Fox Hill. So we worked with the MSBA to estimate what the cost for a feasibility study would be. And again, they've built, I think, what, 200 schools in Massachusetts? And so we used their estimates to get that amount.
Mr. Pearson.
Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. First of all, I'm very pleased to see this feasibility study going ahead. I think that the likelihood that the MSBA is going to ever fund Burlington redoing this high school is very low and that we need to move ahead and do it rather than waiting for the state government, very moneymaker, to rain dollars upon us. And I think the second thing I have is that I think that I'm a little alarmed that in the wording here, it says new-build options. And do new-build options mean things like tearing down one wing and building something else? Or does new-build mean a whole new school? Which are you guys talking about here? Because I would not like to spend a whole lot of money on this feasibility study going into what a beautiful $500 million high school would look like.
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The point of the feasibility study would be to look at all options. So I'm assuming they would look at a renovation. They would also look at some new construction, again, possibly a mixture, keeping some of the facilities that we have. I think when asking these questions of our current project manager, that's Dorn Whittier for the Fox Hill project, we asked if we could actually extend their contracts, given that they were already working at Fox Hill. They felt that building in this size would require a full, separate feasibility, and that would make the most sense. They also said the cost now of renovating a building built in this time may not be that different from some new construction as well. So again, I'm certainly not an expert. There are experts here, but once you renovate a certain percentage of the building's value, then all of the codes have to come... Be brought up to the current codes. So again, just fixing the heating and cooling systems in this building would trigger a whole bunch of other work. And one of the things that I was surprised to learn, again, little things that stick in my head, is our elevators in this building actually aren't ADA compliant. They're not big enough. And so just making our elevators bigger is incredibly expensive. So maybe new construction would be, again, less expensive than trying to fix some of the problems that exist. So it's going to be... The feasibility study would be comprehensive. It would look at a bunch of different options for the community and the school committee to consider.
Thank you. Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. A couple of things have me concerned about how this has all kind of gone about direction-wise. Last year, I was standing here, actually advocating for us not to spend the $450,000 on that music room. And felt more so because, as someone who does have a physical disability, I probably have more of a reason to vote against it or actually have that vote than probably most people in this auditorium tonight. But we voted for it anyways. Months went by, nothing's done with it, which is a surprise to me. I mean, usually when we vote that kind of money, we usually start the renovations. The whole summer last year, nothing. The whole fall, time goes on, and we're sitting on $450,000. So I'm scratching my head, wondering why in the hell are we sitting on $450,000 on any project that we voted for in this town? Things should have been set in motion. So it's got me concerned as to why were we sitting on $450,000 when this was so important? It was so important to fill that room in with cement or whatever they were going to do with it, and it wasn't touched. So I'm just... I'm trying not to go down that route and say, well, maybe there was an ulterior motive for the $450,000, because clearly you wouldn't sit there for three, four, five, six months and not do anything to the project that you just asked this body to vote in favor for. But yet the body winds up voting for it anyways. And now we're here with the million dollars for the high school, and it still's got me baffled because the main focus that we should be driving with is, again, the Fox Hill and Pine Glen, always coming to focus. I have a lot of people in my district, and they're Pine Glen parents. They're naturally concerned. What are you doing with Pine Glen? And we just dance around the issue. So now we're being asked for a million dollars. I graduated from the school. My children graduated from the school, and it's probably the most ugliest school in the whole damn district, if not the whole surrounding northeast area. Everyone conveniently called it the prison. I have news for you, folks. The prison isn't going anywhere. It's a cement structure. It's... And we've done a very good job over the years in maintaining this building, and I will say that. If you walk through the hallways, it's very well-kept, and we've done a very good job in maintaining it. And yes, there are concerns about hitting the benchmark as far as renovations, and we've known that on multiple, multiple projects within this town, that you hit that ceiling and then everything has to be upgraded. I'm just still perplexed because we're supposed to wait on a committee to decide whether we should be doing a one-large elementary school or two-small elementary schools. I keep on getting the feedback, most of the parents want the two-small elementary I keep on getting the feedback, most of the parents want the two-small elementary schools. And I hope that the school committee would think likewise.
Let's wrap it up, please, Mr. Cormier.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was taking that much time. So we still don't see a larger picture as far as what we're doing with the school system. And we're being asked to shift gears and spend this kind of money on a feasibility study for the high school when I think it should be actually a feasibility study for Pine Glen. I mean, you've got the youngest of the children in there. It would seem to me that you should approach it in that manner. Those are the oldest schools in our system. Those are the ones that need a good amount of repair, and for the youngest children as well.
All right, Mr. Cormier. Let's let somebody—
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to take up too much of your time, Bill.
Let somebody answer the questions.
I don't think it should be voted on for this particular building right now. This building isn't going anywhere, and I think that we should be focusing more on our elementary schools if we're going to be spending that kind of money. Sorry to inconvenience you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier.
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to make just one brief comment.
Dr. Conti, please.
For many of the warrant articles you vote on for schools, remember, we only have about an eight-week window between the summer before we have to get ready. If it's a construction project that's going to impact kids, sometimes we, because this meeting is late in May, it may mean that we need to stage the project next summer. So there's no alternative motive with anything that had to do with the high school music room. We just couldn't line up the contractors and get it done in that time. And again, after speaking to this body, the questions about why is this your priority, we did listen, and that's why we went back to think about the feasibility study that's required for this building. Part of Pine Glen is being mentioned a lot. Part of the Fox Hill project, the state is requiring us to study many things about Pine Glen. So I'm going to say there's a partial feasibility being done on Pine Glen right now that is part of the Fox Hill project. Ultimately, if the community decides, whatever they decide, there may need to be more work done in terms of Pine Glen. But right now, that is, Pine Glen is being discussed as part of the Fox Hill project because the state is requiring us to do so.
Mr. Monaco.
Testing, 1, 2, 3, 4. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. In the spirit of full disclosure, my wife Christine is on the school committee. My comments have absolutely nothing to do with what she's trying to, you know, do with this. These are really my own thoughts. Number one, this article has absolutely nothing to do with the elementary schools, nothing whatsoever in my mind. Number two, this building and this operation as high school, it's inevitable at some point in the next decade, we know we have to deal with its age, its organization, its size versus the needs. And it's very complex. The school committee has made an attempt at MSBA applications multiple times. And I think part of the reason that that's so difficult is we don't have our arms completely around what's really going to happen here over the next decade for this building. And this is the way to get there. It has to be looked at with a lot of guidance. Many high schools in the area have been fully renovated that are of similar kinds of complexity, but not quite this. Many of them have been done in phases, and they've been very successful. But it takes a lot of planning, a lot of analysis of needs, costs, methodologies to get there. And I know of no other way to get where we need to go between now and the next five years with the right kind of planning than to get some true help from organizations that deal with this very professionally and a great deal of detail and with a lot of experience. And I think we need it. I think we desperately need it, not because it's urgent, it's because it's inevitable. And I feel that the best way for us to have a really good footing to do this is to have this kind of a study done. And they are expensive. They're very expensive. But it's sharp money compared to where you're headed with this. So I would really urge you to support it. Separate in your mind what's going on with the elementary schools. It truly has nothing to do with what we need for the high school. And I truly think this is a long-range problem, and this is a good way to see where we can get off to a decent start with a lot of fresh ideas and a lot of guidance on what your options really are and probably what your needs really are. And I urge you to support this. I think it would be a disaster to do it any other way. So thank you for listening to me.
Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. I hope a simple question, really on the wording of the warrant article. I fully support planning and feasibility studies to find out going forward. But in the article, it says, "We're going to repurpose the funding of the 450." But it also says, "or otherwise provide the sum of 450." What does that mean, "or otherwise provide"?
What's in the warrant is different from the motion. The motion doesn't say that. It says, "Provide the sum of $450,000 for the purpose of funding blah, 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 blah." Mr. Sinessi.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I actually want to say I really appreciate this coming before us because, as I said before, there's a lot of issues in the school, in the high school with HVAC and boilers that have been neglected for a long time that need to be addressed. And as Member Pearson had said before, even if we have to do this without aid, that's at the point of that these things need to be addressed. It's that important. I also appreciate that they did give the money back for the music room floor, because I was ready to burn the place down last year for that one. But I do appreciate that they listened and responded, and I would urge the passage of this. I do have one ask in particular. I think that as we go down the road of a, what do you call it, school building committee, now for the high school, the adjacency of wetlands, I think we should have someone from the planning board on the committee. I think someone should have, from the planning board, it should have been on the other one. I think some of the issues that you're having, you know, the planning outwards, the planning forward, and I do see some of that around the pumps and the HVAC built into the 10-year plan. I see that's already built in, so I like that. But I do think the planning forward and the scheduling of when we would want to see budgeting built into 10-year plans, I think that you could get some help from capital budget as well. I know the school committee has been resistant to that in the past, but I think different boards should have more representation. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis, you've already spoken.
Can I follow up my questions?
No, you can't. You've already spoken. You have to wait till we go through. Sorry. Ms. Wassaf.
Gina Wassaf, Precinct 1. I support this, and thank you for, I second Mr. Sinessi's here for coming back with us, to us, because a lot of us had a lot of questions about the sequencing of the maintenance. My question to you is, you mentioned that it was the capacity, this school was built for 2,000 student capacity, and now we're at 1,000, about 50% decrease. Will this study take into account possible fluctuations or changes in needs for the capacity here? In other words, will it take into account that, you know, the numbers could go back up?
We would do an enrollment study as part of that. We've had to do an enrollment study for, again, for the elementary school projects that are going, so we would certainly look at doing that as well. The State Building Authority, if you're working with them, actually requires you to do an enrollment projection and use their numbers. So yes. Answer your question, yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. I'm looking at the warrant article on the screen, and it does say, "or otherwise provide the sum of $450,000." I think that was the question that Ms. Ellis asked, and we were told that language was not in there. And I'm looking at it right now.
See, that's the problem when I have two articles kind of saying the same thing, and one of them has it in it and one doesn't. So—
I'm looking at—
So would you like to make a motion to amend that and scratch out that language?
That one says Article 29. And I'm looking at my 29, and it says, "or any other sum."
Yes, we can scratch that out, Jack, if you'd like, if you make such a motion.
Okay. I make such a motion.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Okay. The motion will be to strike out "or otherwise provide." Any questions or comments on that? All in favor of amending it? All opposed to amending it? The amendment is made. It's approved by town council. It's good. Okay. Let's move on. Mr. Collins.
Hi, Dan Collins, Precinct 6. So I'm just kind of looking more for a question on what the feasibility study, because I'm kind of losing track of all the different studies we've got going on now with the different schools and the police department and everything. Do these studies include long-term budget ramifications and having all of these projects potentially going on all at the same time, or how this is going to be structured over the next 20 years, so on and so forth, paying for everything?
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't believe the feasibility study will talk about the financial impact on the town, but I think they will price out options and put in escalators for when the work would happen and how they could phase it in. I think then if they had those dollar amounts, then the town's financial team could look at how that applies to the bond schedule, the borrowing schedule, and how we sort of phase that in and how we pay for it. So they wouldn't know enough about how the town wants to manage their money where they would do that, but they would provide the specifics of the projects and the cost associated with that.
Thank you. Michelle Hantoon, Precinct 1. So the backup information says that this could take 12 to 24 months. I think this is a great step, and I think it's something we should be voting in favor of. I'm kind of frustrated that we wasted a lot of time last May debating an article, you know, with funding, as Mr. Cormier said, that was never used. My question is, once we engage these consultants and are in the process of the feasibility study, assuming that it takes 24 months, over that two-year period, will we have some of their advice, you know, on if any of these Band-Aid issues come up? Any small things that you might typically want to bring before us to vote on or debate on? Will those be run through the consulting forum first, or are we going to have to wait 24 months until we have a plan? Does that make sense?
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, I think it does make sense. I think that I'm sure if they're engaged and know the building well, we would ask them their advice if something did come up. I think that's the, sort of, that's the point. I really didn't want to present, again, three potential music room floor issues which would pay for this feasibility study. What we're really trying to do is mimic the Massachusetts School Building Authority process without waiting for the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So they would ask us to do a feasibility study first. That feasibility study would take 12 to 24 months. We would form a building committee. We're going to do all of those things. The work is going to be public. There'll be websites. Everyone will be able to follow along, because my hope is, at some point, the state will accept the high school into their program. And if we've been following their steps all along, then they can accept the work that we've been doing prior to their involvement. So again, I know that's optimistic, but I'm an optimistic person. So yes, we would use them. They would know the building really well. We would certainly ask them if there's a priority before coming to this body and asking for a significant amount of money. But they might say, "That part of the building is never going to change. You have to keep that." So an investment now is going to last another 40 or 50 years or something, I guess, is what I would ask them.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Donna Grigorio, Precinct 1. Move the question.
The question has been moved. It's not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question? Thank you. All those opposed?
Online.
There's more than 2/3 of the majority in favor of moving the question? So let's vote on Article 29. First, all those in favor and online, please vote. Thank you. Opposed? Thank you.
Two yeses.
And two yeses online. Article 29 passes with a clear majority. Article 30, online, please vote. All those in favor of Article 30? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. And online?
Two yeses.
Two yeses online. Article 30 passes. Thank you. Now, Article 31. Mr. Sinessi. Is Article 31 going to be withdrawn?
Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. Thanks for sticking around, because we're pulling this. Have a good night, everyone.
No, no, no. You can't leave yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Vote to adjourn.
We have a resolution we have to deal with. If you adjourn, I can't stop you from adjourning, but if you do, we have to come back next Okay. Resolution as presented by Land Use. Get Burlington Town Meeting express support for the Burlington Sustainability and Resilience Action Planning Project, a proposal before the Massachusetts Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. The proposal, if funded, would lead to a planning-based action grant for the town of Burlington, as submitted by the Land Use Committee. Any questions or comments? Mr. Pearson, anything to say?
I just wanted to say that the Land Use Committee was asked to endorse this proposal that went to the state government, and we thought that it would be more appropriate, after discussing it with the moderator, that the town meeting vote, an endorsement, that that would be more impressive to the state than merely a committee of this body. And so we are asking for your vote, favorable vote on this. The point is, is that this committee, if we were to get this grant, we would have a sustainability study, yes, another study, a sustainability study that would look into various ways that we can make the town more ready for climate change. Climate change is going to mean more heavy rainstorms. It's going to be more droughts, and it's going to be more severe weather that we have not really experienced or planned for in the past. And there are ways that people have come up with that can make the town safer and not have to clean up a mess first, but have to actually try to prevent that mess. And so we believe this study is an ounce of prevention that may save us a pound of cure, and we think that it would be useful for the town meeting to endorse this proposal, which is before the state government right now. Thank you.
Discussion from the body. Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. I know it's late. This shall be short and sweet, I hope. This says, "Express a support for the Burlington Sustainability and Resilience Action Planning Project." That implies that there's a project that's a Burlington— That implies that there's a project, that's a Burlington project as part of this program? So is that something we're going to fund and do? Is that what this says?
Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Moderator, through the moderator. It does not mean that we are going to plan anything, we are not going to do anything or fund anything without coming back to this body with some kind of report that recommends that we do this, or recommends that we do that. We're not-
Thank you.
We're not pre-committing any other funds.
Anything further on this? All those in favor, then, let's vote. People online, please vote. Thank you. Thank you.
Two yeses.
And two yeses. It's adopted.
Motion to adjourn.
More music to my ears. I've been so moved that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And my, my congratulations to you, this is the first time I've sat through one of these in only two nights.
Aye.
Yes.